Good evening and welcome to the September 23rd, 2015 Monta Moi Regional School Committee meeting. Called meeting to order at 7:07. There's been a request to postpone the approval of minutes, so we will skip item B. We'll move to public comment. Is there anyone who would like to make public comment? Mr. Houston.
Good evening, I'm Justin, a history teacher at a high school. I just wanted to share briefly a great event that we had last week on Constitution Day. Six of the top students in history from last year that are now seniors accompanied me up to Boston for Constitution Day. And the Association, the American Board of Trial Advocates sponsor a James Otis lecture. James Otis, of course, from Bonneville County was one of the heroes of the revolution. And we went up there and we had Fagles Day covering part of the Freedom Trail, going to the State House, listening to the lecturers. And if you go to my Twitter feed @Montamoihistory, you can see the picture that's in today's chronicle of the six girls sitting in the front row in the State House in the House chambers just before the lecture began. And it was just a great, great day with those fabulous young people from our school. Talk about representing us well in the State House. It was fantastic. While we were there, part of the theme of Constitution Day is engaged citizenry. And there were students from all over the state. This is the ABODA, the organization sends out an invitation and schools from all over the state sponsor some of their students to go participate in the lectures. And this year's focus was on the importance of the jury system. And every year they have a different special focal point. But the speakers all were emphasizing the importance of studying history and studying government. And as we move forward with the strategic planning, folks have been discussing that for the last couple of meetings. And you know that one of the things is considering the graduation requirements. And for over 40 years, both Chatham and Harwich and now Montamoie have had a four-year requirement in history, which culminates with our capstone government class in the senior year. And the last couple of years, in addition to that here on the Cape, Legal Women Voters has been sponsoring meetings amongst all the schools on the Cape trying to foster further engagement. And so as we move forward with that strategic planning, I guess I'm getting up here to give a little plug for maintaining that 40-year tradition that we feel has really given our students a real leg up on the competition and put them in good stead for college preparation. I think some of you who have been on the board for a number of years have even had the past students coming up and providing testimony of how their specific activities in their four years of history have contributed to their success. So, the trip and that ongoing question. I'm looking forward to the evening and afternoon sessions to further engage in the strategic planning process to wrestle with some of those issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Was that also on support Montamoie schools? That information and pictures, was that also on supporting Montamoie High School? Or whatever it is?
I think it was retweeted by a number of people that are on the Twitter feed and it showed up on the school.
That was really, that was really great. The whole thing.
We posted pictures and they responded.
Thank you for showing.
Any other comments? We'll move on to recognitions.
I just wanted to do a quick recognition. This is in reference to an email I sent out a little earlier today to our football coach. But it wasn't so much for a first win. It was just an acknowledgement of a lot of things that, at least from my vantage point and I think from a number of community members that they've seen, they've just done sort of good shows of support from our team. You know, one of the things I referenced in the email that I sent the coach was just an appreciation that I had heard from community members in Chatham that one of the football players lost a grandfather. And there was a funeral service a couple of weeks ago in Chatham. And the entire team came to show the respect. And from those that were there at the funeral, I said that there wasn't a dry eye, just in terms of the unity that was there. And I appreciate, I shared with the coach, I appreciate the win. But when it comes to our sports program, it's not about the wins. It's about developing upstanding, great character in youth. And I think he's doing a nice job of that in the short 30 years. I appreciate it. That's it for me.
Also, didn't the field hockey team have a win? It was something recently I saw some pictures on one of these things. I'm not sure which I'm looking at, but it's not tweeted. And it was showing some really good goals that they had. And also to support what you said about the football, I was catching the parade at Cranberry Fest. And there were a number of sharks in there, little and big. But the football team looked like it might have been nearing full force. That was nice.
It was. We'll move on to reports and discussions. First up is looking at math differently.
Good evening. My name is Mary Hemmian. I teach math here at the high school. And I am here so Scott can redeem himself as a student. I received my degree in mathematics 32 years ago. And I've been teaching high school math ever since here in this district. And I was great in math in high school, learned it a certain way, no problem, went to college, majored in math, started teaching, and I taught how I learned it. Which is actually great for the student that gets math fairly easily. And I really never gave it much thought until this spring when I embarked on my first master's program. It's nothing that I needed, but this came across my desk a few years ago and piqued my interest. And decided to take the plunge at this stage of the game because I felt that it was a program worth embarking on. And it's been fantastic so far. I'm in my fifth course at the moment. But this one particular course that we started the program with, this is a program that is sponsored by Teachers 21 in conjunction with Pittsburgh State University. And the first course in problem solving, she gave us a benchmark assessment opening day. And so I pulled out my pencil and I proceeded to do my algebra as I know best. And she came up to me and kind of slapped me on the hand and said, "No, no, 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 no. We're going to think of math a little differently. We're not using any algebra." So I kind of had a little panic attack. So I handed out just a couple of examples of what she had given us. And I just want to share with you, I have a whiteboard, so bear with me. But I want to show you how I would have, for the last 30 years, taught my algebra students how to solve this first problem, which, you know, it doesn't seem terribly difficult. I spent half my weekly allowance on food and gave one-third of the remainder to my friend. I now have $8. What is my weekly allowance? And she talked about some different strategies that we should implement daily in our classroom. It's so important for children to be able to read what's in front of them mathematically. And that's one of the biggest hurdles that we have to overcome every day is students are fairly comfortable with numbers when the numbers are in front of them. But as soon as you toss words into a math problem, they freak out. Their homework will come back with everything done except the word problems. "Oh, I don't know how to do it." So I loved this class because, like I said, it showed me that, yeah, the typical algebraic logarithmism is great for the student that picks up on it quite easily. But for the child that struggles, it's not really going to be something that stays with them. And so, yeah, they may graduate, but they don't have that problem-solving ability under their belt. So what I'm going to do is show you how I would have taught this up until now in my algebra classes. And then I'll show you the different way that we were taught during this class. And then I'm going to have you try number two. Not algebraically, but these are all solved by drawing a picture. So I think you'll find that you'll be able to tackle some things that maybe you didn't think you could, unless you're doing your math constantly. Mike, how you doing? All right. So if I had done this before, the first thing I'd tell the students is, identify your unknown and assign a variable to it. So I would read through this problem with them. And the question asks, "What is my weekly allowance?" "Lain, come get a problem." They're right up there on the end. So I would have done something like this. And they would have written it on the board. Let x equal, that's our unknown, that's what we're trying to find. And then they would have built their algebraic equation around that. So I spent half my weekly allowance on food, gave one-third of the remainder to my friend. I now have $8. What is my weekly allowance? Well, if I were to help them build their equation, I would have said, "Okay, they're telling me that I have $8 left." So we started with x, and then what did we do? We spent half, half on food. So we spent half of x. And I would have subtracted, sorry, this is messy. I would have subtracted half of x from that. And then what? And then gave one-third of the remainder. If I started with x and then I spent half x, my remainder is half x. And I would have given a third of that away. So a third of half of x. So now they've got to get the multiplication of the fractions in. So one-third of half of x is 1/6x. That's what they spent, or that's what they gave to their friend. And with that, I apologize for the notes. What do we have, about $8? So if you can kind of follow that, that's how we would have done it algebraically. And that would have been our equation to solve. So now they look at this, and there are fractions, which is another bone of contention for the students. So now they have to find common denominators so that they can combine these x's together and solve for x. So my common denominator would be 6. So I have 6 over 6x minus 3 over 6x minus 1 over 6x. So 6/6 minus 3/6 is 3/6. Minus 1/6 is 4/6.
2/6.
Oh, see there? Look at that. 6 minus 3 is 3, minus 1 is 2. Thank you. Teachers have issues with addition. All right, so 2/6, thank you. 2/6x equals 8. We could reduce the 2/6 if we wanted to to 1/3. So 1/3 of x equals $8. And I could, I would have taught them, how do we isolate our variable, Lain? So what would we do to both sides of this equation to solve for x?
Divide by 2/6.
Divide by 2/6. So how do we divide with fractions?
Multiply.
Multiply by the reciprocal. She had me for Algebra I. So we would multiply by the reciprocal. So we would multiply by 6 over 2 to both sides. And then we get 48 over 2, which is 24. So $24. But honestly, that's how I learned. That's how I've been teaching my students using algebra. And so this first course comes along. And, no, 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 no. So she had to do this entire unit on, just draw a picture. So see, Scott was at a disadvantage to begin with because you, look at you. He didn't get the lesson before I had him start the problem. He was just left to his own devices with no instruction at all. So what it would look like with a picture is you simply have a rectangle or a circle or whatever it is that you'd like to draw that represents your weekly allowance. And then what did you do? You spent half of it on food. So there's the half you spent on food. I gave one-third of the remainder. Well, this is what's left, this space over here. So I gave one-third of that to my friend. So I chomped that into thirds. And that's the one-third that you gave to your friend. I now have $8 left. These are two equal parts. These are three equal parts, but those are two equal parts that represent $8. So it's really easy for kids to see that there must be $4 in each of those spots. So there's $4 here and $4 here that they have left. This was another equal part of that. So that's another $4. So they ended up giving $4 to their friend. And remember, this quantity over here represented half of what they started with. So the 4, the 4, the 4, for a total of $12 on this half is also $12 on the first half for a total of 24. So, Mr. Carter. We're getting the thumbs up? Okay. All right, ready? See if you can do number two. Everybody, have at it. It's fun. When's the last time you did an algebra?
That's a third of a half, so that means it's 12. That's 12, so it's 4. This is a half for half, so it's 50. Jim just gives 100. He got 100, so it's 2.
Are you cheating with your neighbor?
He popped it off.
He popped it off you, okay. So we're just going to try to draw a picture. I lost my question. See? Isn't that nice?
Go Bill, go Bill.
I think Mr. Carter did it.
Should he try, you want to try this example? I love it. How's the crowd doing? You ready? Sheila. You got anything?
I got 200.
The girl's in the back, $200,000. That's all right. It's okay.
I took Chester's money also.
There's a couple on the back if you practice at home. Yeah, $200,000. So very quickly, I know you have a long agenda, so I won't. There, we're looking for the total amount of the estate. So there it is. She gave half to her son. So we're going to cross out half right off the get-go. And then she left half of the remaining half to her cousin Fred. So we're going to cut the remaining half in half. It was suggested, if you want to make improvements on your diagram, draw so that you can really distinguish between your sections. So if you cut the first one in half this way, cut the other one in half. Yeah. So again, she left half of the remaining half to Fred. So we'll put Fred in here. And then what? She left half of the remaining half to her nephew Horace. So we're going to cut that remaining half in half, and Horace gets that piece. How are we doing? And then, Chester, yeah. So the remaining space is the $25,000 that she left to her cat. So if that little space is $25,000, remember how you divvy this up? Those are equal halves. So there's another $25,000 there for Horace. And oh, right, those are equal halves. So there's $50,000 down here, which means there's $50,000 up here that went to Fred. And oh, right, those are equal halves. So your $100,000 on this half is balanced out by your $100,000 on that half for your total estate of $200,000.
This is very similar way Katie and Scott did our fiscal 70 budget.
He's going to be better now.
Monday night, the Slankman's meeting.
So anyway. So we do have some, there's one other teacher that is doing the master's program with me. And it's one of our goals this year that aside from, I mean, algebra obviously has its place and students do need that. But we'd also like to send kids away from Montamoie with a skill that they can solve problems and skills that will stay with them beyond math classroom. And you all did a great job. Look at you.
Mrs. Hemmian, if I may. Well, I'm trying to remember what grade I was in when I took algebra. Was it ninth?
Ninth grade, yeah.
Ninth grade. It seems to me that by doing it this way, somebody much younger than ninth grade would get it.
Right? Can I tell you? These are middle school problems. This particular sheet. But you're right. And if we taught problem-solving, you know, skills instead of pure content, then they would take those skills with them from year to year to year. So the content is obviously hugely important. But when you can start looking, and I mean, like I said, this is a first for me. I would never have thought to teach it this way. But it was one of the strategies that she's exposed us to. Working backwards is another. And it was just interesting. And I think makes sense to kids. It helps them digest the words in front of them because that is one of the more difficult tasks in front of them is reading what's there. So, anyway.
Can you offer that to math-challenged parents? That's fantastic. I still got it wrong, but it did make sense.
As a matter of fact, the Westgate Foundation funded the class for me. So they had asked me to do a parents' night. So I'm actually going to be working on setting up a date with that and getting the news out to the parents. So that, because in all honesty, when you've been away from doing math for as long as most of us have, you know, your child is coming home with what looks Greek, it's tough to help them. So that was one thing that they had asked me to do in lieu of their funding that class for me, was to give back to the community. And we kind of brainstormed and came up with just a parents' night of strategies and resources that are out there. So you can look for that. Thank you. Oh, go Cindy. All right, Cindy wants the answers. Anybody else want to copy these down and then you can check them later? Scott knows the answer is 3 now. I'll let you look it down one day. Number 3 is $48. And number 4 is, what'd you get?
Depends on which way I do it.
84.
I had 76, so I need something else.
Yeah. Nice. It's fun.
I'll figure it out.
I know you will. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're going to move off of reports and discussions briefly because back by popular demand, we have Lain to do the student report.
Thank you for your contribution.
Hello. How are you? Great. So I want to start out by saying that we're happy to be back. Brand new school year, senior year, very exciting. We're off to a really good start. We've got plenty of stuff going on already. Never a dull moment around here. So to start out, we had a blood drive this week. We had one yesterday that was open to students and then the public later on. Today we had our club fair, which was very well-received. We had eighth grade through seniors come down, sign up for all new clubs. And a cool thing about Montamoie is we have a club for everything. And if we don't have it, as long as you have somebody to start it, we'll start it. So we have everything from archery club to multicultural club to interact club. So we got a lot going on. We also had eighth grade orientation, where they got to meet our buddies. A lot of seniors have buddies, some juniors have buddies as well if you take Peer leads class. So we're really getting to know the eighth graders, which is great. Just making them feel welcome, you know, if they have any questions or anything that they need, checking in with them. We also have the Special Olympics coming up next Thursday. Coming is October 17. And we also have senior versus junior Powderpuff. Who's going to win, seniors? Also, the football team won their first game on Friday, which was great. And field hockey beat T Y yesterday. And the boys golf team is off to a great start as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, back to reports and discussions. Close reading and writing from sources. Are we going to be tested on this too?
So when we looked at the draft of our strategic plan and we started talking about what levers would we see as being those that we polled we would improve student learning, this was one of them that I think we all agreed on. And so the superintendent asked me to come and explain a little bit about what close reading is. So the first thing to understand is that close reading is not a new idea. It is a method of text analysis, very close text analysis. It's mostly, most common at the high school and college level. If any of you have the pleasure of taking US History, you are advanced placement. You're familiar with the DVQ, Document-Based Questions. It's that process, and we're moving it all the way to the kindergarten level. It is focused on comprehension. So the students interact with the text and find deeper meaning in the text through the process of close reading. It demands that students make claims and support their claims using evidence. Multitasking here with two things. So the impact on student learning clearly is, first and foremost, deeper comprehension. It drills down to those higher-order thinking skills and allows students to engage in that metacognitive thinking about their thinking. These skills are activated when they encounter problem-solving, messy problems, things that they've never seen before so that they are building their knowledge and then they're making meaning of that knowledge and then they're applying that understanding to new situations. It's kind of perfect that Mary was here to talk about math problems because you'll see that close reading is very important when students are looking and learning about math. I like to think that close reading is both a noun and a verb. It's a practice, it's an instructional practice, and it's also a skill. So the teachers are going through the process of instruction in a close read and then the students are getting that skill that they can then apply to all the content areas as they develop their comprehension.
as they develop their comprehension. See if there's anything else I wanna say about that. Okay. I can't do two things at once. The Partnership for Assessment of College and Career Readiness, otherwise known as PARC, says this about close reading, I'm not gonna read it for you, because I know, I believe you have the handout in front of you.
Definitely a page or missing.
It printed one side, it's not two sides.
A lot closer reading would miss it.
Well, I'll see if you get it. I know I did insert an extra slide from the one that was sent to you midweek, so we can get that to you. So students engage in, what this would look like in the classroom is the teacher would take an excerpt from a text or an article, photocopy it so that all the students have a copy of it, and then they can start to mark it up. So they want to identify what they see to be the main idea. Then they wanna circle words that they don't understand, and they begin to dive into the text, marking it up, so that they can begin to dissect it, really kind of unpack the text. And they're doing this with the teacher asking key questions that start to go deeper and deeper into their, into the text, and also higher up in the Bloom's taxonomy, or higher order thinking skills, and I'll show you that in a minute. But I just wanna point out in the second paragraph, the middle of it that talks about the structure of language, because one of the things that close reading instruction does is help students understand the structure of language. Why would an author put a word in this order? What is the point of view of the author, and how does the structure of the language help that meaning as well? So web depth of knowledge is similar to Bloom's taxonomy, and if you start at level one, that is where children are building their knowledge, that simple recall, facts, they're building their knowledge there. Then you move around to level two, and they begin to make meaning of that knowledge. That's compare and contrast, cause and effect, taking that knowledge that they've learned, and they're starting to make meaning with it and work with it. Then you go a little bit deeper, down around to level three, and they begin to formulate hypotheses, cite evidence. And then finally, once they've made meaning of that knowledge, then they apply their understanding at level four, and begin to create design and make something beyond what they've, you know, what they were in the, in the level one. So here's an example at the elementary level, and this is taken from this source, and thank you, Mrs. Miller, Dr. Miller, for bringing this. This is a book that is by the woman that is working with the elementary teachers in our training for close reading. So this is an elementary experience of some of the purposes for reading, and how we move, if you imagine that the arrow is going down as the web's depth of knowledge is going up, or Bloom's taxonomy is going up. So first and foremost, obviously, we read for sheer pleasure. And the example here for the elementary classroom would be a book called George Washington Sucks. And that would just be a read aloud, no particular skill, no outcome, simply engaging the students, and most likely introducing them to a unit about George Washington. And then the next point or purpose of reading might be to get some facts. So this is level one, we're building our knowledge, we're getting some facts. So we're looking for recall, when was George Washington born? So the students would look through a different text, but something on George Washington, and start to pull out those facts. Then we'll move to the next level, and we say, we ask the students to identify the details of George Washington's crossing of Delaware. So now they're making observations, they're organizing their facts, they're starting to get deeper into that text. Then, maybe the same text, maybe a different text, but the question becomes, what was George Washington's point of view about American independence? So now this requires a close read, the students really have to go and start to look at point of view, okay? So now, if you think of that web, the depth of knowledge, now we're moving toward that strategic thinking, that logical assessment, okay? That looking for evidence to make the claims that they're making about Washington's point of view. And then finally, we, if the prompt is, how did George Washington contribute to making the American dream, then the students are taking their learning, they're extending that thinking, and they're applying it to their theory, and they're showing evidence for it. So this is something that can be used, you can use a variety of different resources, or you could use one resource and have the students just start to get deeper and deeper. It's a lot of reading and rereading and marking until the comprehension is there. The other part of close reading is writing from sources, and I just wanna kind of highlight the last three bullets, because that really starts to get students involved in the research process. And if we go back to our question, our level four, if you will, question of how did George Washington contribute to the American dream, and why do you think that? Remember, it's this metacognitive, why do you think, what are you thinking about your thinking, how do you know what you know? And so if students have the opportunity to gain their comprehension to a point where they can begin to develop arguments, and then cite evidence. Big push of the Common Core is claim and evidence, claim and evidence, and you hear that over and over again. If students are going to make a claim, if they're going to make a decision about something, they need to be able to cite it with evidence. And obviously, that sounds very familiar to those of you who've done any, you know, college level work, you can't say anything without saying why you're saying it, and how do you know it? And so this is helping them build those skills, and build them very early on. So as Mrs. Hemian said, learning math is really a literacy issue. We find that a lot of math problems, that student learning problems, have a literacy cause, if you will. And so as this quote says, the, you know, math problems, as Mrs. Hemian said, are very wordy, and students will look at them and just say, too much, there's too much there. So by learning the skill and the practice of close reading, they can go into a word problem, unpack it just as you did, and really start to pull out the key points to help solve that problem. I hope you can read this, and when you're sent the digital, you can blow this part up, but one of the things that close reading and writing from sources does, it's cross-disciplinary. And so this demonstrates the center point where the science, math, and the English Language Arts standards meet, and those are those standards that I listed on that slide, that's the writing from sources. And so this is where the students are going to be assessed, when we begin to build as a district, these close reading assessments that we can start to use as benchmarks, as part of our initiative in this, in this close reading and writing from sources. So as you see, that sweet spot, if you will, where everything overlaps, is the English standards, the mathematical practice standards, and also the science standards. So I did have a conversation with the department head in the art department here at the high school, and she uses this all the time in giving students different sources, asking them to analyze them, and then writing about them. So it's cross-disciplinary. So we had a professional development on September 3rd, and a very well-known teacher of reading, and college, former college professor, and the author of this book, and many books, called Close Reading, Closer Reading, she was here for the day and did a training with our elementary staff. She's coming back tomorrow, and again on Friday, and she's gonna be working in the Harrods Elementary School tomorrow, and in the Chatham Elementary School on Friday, and she's going to be doing model lessons, and the principals have created a schedule, so teachers will be released and go in and be able to either observe or engage in the model lessons, and then there'll be time for the teachers to be able to process and reflect with her. And then we're hoping that she can come back mid-year, once the teachers have had a chance to practice this in their classes, and help in that regard. Also, on the third, Mr. Wilson at the middle school did an introduction with his staff on close reading and text-dependent questions. Based on the feedback, it was very well received, he did a great hands-on activity to really demonstrate how this process and this strategy can work. And then in our educational council meetings, that's our teacher leadership groups, our instructional leaders and department heads, we've been following up with trainings there as well, and they will then take that work into their professional learning community work in our early release Wednesdays, and start to build some capacity in this practice. I put this slide in because this was from last year, after we looked at our grade three reading scores, and this is some action steps that we put in place last year to address some of the learning concerns. And I highlighted the reading comprehension assessment, because one of the things that we noticed last year, looking at our assessments at the elementary level in literacy, was that we had a lot of assessments for decoding, encoding fluency, but not a lot to tell us about the comprehension piece. And so last year, the teachers were trained in and started implementing the DRA-2, which is an assessment that helps to give you a reading on, no pun intended, on children's comprehension levels. And we're still working on that, teachers are still learning how to calibrate that assessment, but that is gonna be giving us some data that we can use. And I put this up here because the close reading and writing from sources is the next layer to this, okay? It's not just a new thing, or something piled on, it's the next step to help drive this initiative. And I also highlighted the columns on the other sides, because it fits really nicely with the work that we've been doing with Jay McTye over the years, in creating performance-based assessments, getting those critical thinking skills, those problem-solving skills. And also, it complements our desire to really increase our writing across the curriculum. So it's a nice fit for something that we've already been doing. So our three-year plan is to spend this year building our capacity, understanding how to do close reading in all of our content areas, and continuing it where it's already happening, and making it, embedding it in the literacy block at the elementary level. And that will come from the training that we're doing with Nancy Boyle. We also hope to develop at least one close reading lesson and writing rubric per content area at each level, and we met on that yesterday in our ed council meeting, and we'll continue to help teachers learn how to go about that, we have many examples and sources that we're using. So we'd like to be able to implement a close reading assessment and writing from sources either late this fall or sometime next spring, just to see where we are in this. And then next year, we'll have that one at least, and then we'll create an additional one, and implement that, so we can start to see some growth in where our students are in this process. And then the following year, we'll be able to implement three benchmarks, one in the fall, winter, and spring, so that we can track the students' growth in their ability to do a close read and to write from a prompt, based on those sources, citing the evidence. And we'll do that at all the levels. So I've included some resources, resources that I've used in this presentation, as well as resources that you can go to and do some further close reading, if you desire, and you're always welcome to give me a buzz, and we can sit down and do a session together.
This looks very interesting. I'm wondering, when you say that it's gonna go across levels, whether at the, at elementary school classroom pictures, or does it expand to gym and music, or, and how does that, in middle school, does it, in high school, does it go across all curriculum areas, or just kind of a language arts unit?
No, it's really cross-curricular, because the skills, the, first of all, the literacy standards are written for English, social studies, and the science and technical subjects. So those literacy skills and that convergence are there. We've talked about the math, and as I said, one of the best examples that I have seen is the one in the art class, where the teacher, you know, takes sources, and what's interesting is, some really good models I've seen, once students feel comfortable with the process, they're, and they're no longer learning to read, but reading to learn, you can use videos, you can use, you know, pictures. What you're teaching the student is to really take a close examination of sources, and then respond to a prompt based on those sources, using those sources as evidence in a claim.
So will all of the teachers then tomorrow and the next day, in all of the curriculum areas, be trained by these people?
Well, everyone's been trained. The program tomorrow and Friday is going to be observing model lessons.
So everybody will be watching those model lessons?
And the classroom teachers.
Classroom teachers, okay. That would be interesting, when you get some of the models, I know PARC has a lot of this in it, doesn't it?
Very much so, yes. Yes, that's really what that quote, that's what they're assessing.
Carla, as a follow-up, excuse me, I noticed in the Globe a few days ago, they had some PARC test scores in their preliminary, compared to MCAS, in all of the categories, and it was third grade and also seventh, a sampling, but it almost, as a first run-through, the PARC seemed to be found more challenging, and the scores were far lower in all categories than the previous year's MCAS scores. And yet, this process, and I know all of our staff, who was primarily on J3, they're teaching for understanding and comprehension in some other fashion, if I go back a lot of years when we all took the IIs and found out where we were. But I wonder, at some point, as we go in three or four years in the PARC, that as youngsters begin this transition into that final understanding on that blue level, would the PARC test scores signal a youngster's level of understanding in the strategic area? So that as that fourth and fifth and sixth grader moves into high school, we could predict some success for AP choices by kids? I'm talking five, six years down the line. I wonder if there's a, or am I getting all of this wrong?
Well, no, the PARC was actually informed by, PARC being the assessment, was informed by colleges and businesses that sat down and said, we're not getting graduates who can do the work we need them to do. Here are the skills we need students exiting high school and college, this is what they need to be able to do. And so the whole assessment was designed in that backward design. And so these skills should increase the level of critical thinking and problem solving in, you know, in the, in, at an early stage, and developing up to be able to do advanced placement, and to extend through cross-disciplinary, you know?
One last question, you mentioned that the staff's been trained, but is this probably so complex that it's gonna take several sessions in the next two or three years?
Oh, absolutely.
And that being the case, and I would imagine, as we launch our PLC program with staff, that this topic would be ongoing, so that there's a built-in agenda that would, not only challenge staff, but be able to have them have an opportunity, just with their colleagues, to be able to fully understand this as they work it through. colleagues to be able to fully understand this as they work it through their classrooms.
Absolutely, yeah. The Second October PLC is going to be devoted to just kind of diving into some of the resources. There's a lot of, some pretty good YouTube videos of classrooms modeling this. But again, I think that there are places where it's being done. We're just trying to make it very explicit at all levels so that, you know, students have the ability to practice the skill and, you know, be successful.
My final comment, I wonder if through grant funding, would it be a decent idea to look into future summer staff training? Mostly brand-new staff coming in, who would be even veterans from another system that's been exposed to this, or new and you'd want to get them with a jump start voluntarily? Would staff be available if we could somehow come up with current money to feature that in a 10-day course or whatever it might be in July or in August?
Absolutely. I did float this by the Curriculum Task Forces, the humanities, last spring. And looking at the examples, and I only had samples from grade 10, it was a K-12 group and every single one of them said, "I could do this, this is, you know, this is great. This is where we want to go." So I've had a lot of positive feedback from staff already about that end product, those benchmark, you know, assessments that we're looking at. So it's just a matter of designing backwards and providing a lot of support.
Great stuff. Any other questions? Thank you. Next is the Youth Risk Behavior Survey.
So I just want to briefly mention that this is, this is in no way meant to be the presentation of the results. I wanted to go ahead and just share with the community or with the committee what the Youth Risk Behavior Survey is, share some of the preliminary findings, but, and then share the process that we've got to go through in sharing this data with the community. But if one were to go from the beginning of the dataset that this collects and share all of the findings, it's an hour and a half presentation. And I would probably never hear the end of it from our chair and several others of you if I spent the time. So when this report gets shared with the, you know, with the community in its full state, I'd encourage you to be part of that. And I'll kind of talk about that at the end here. So what is the Youth Risk Behavior Survey? So the survey was administered last November to Montmoi students, grade seven through 12. It was composed of 110 questions for the high school survey that ranged from substance abuse to depression and suicide, sexual behavior, violence and bullying, perceptions of adult support. The seventh and eighth graders' survey excluded the sexuality questions, so they just had a 95-question survey that they were doing. And most of the questions focused on, you know, did you do this behavior in the last month? Did this ever happen in your lifetime? So most of the questions are sort of in the lifetime, past month, past, you know, past year timeframe linked to each question. As I said, it was given to students, seventh grade through 12th grade. 705 students were given the survey. And it's a voluntary survey. The students had the, had the ability to opt out. It was a roughly even distribution of boys and girls that were taking the survey. A lot of times, you know, when you give and present the survey data, people say, "Well, hey, I heard that this, you know, one student went and, you know, circled A for every answer and wasn't taking it seriously." One of the things that you need to take into account is that this is a very tried and tested survey. It's been, it's been given to, you know, over 2 million students nationwide. And there are safeguards when the survey gets analyzed. So in questions involving sexuality, or drug use, or alcohol use, there are three or four different questions that wind up asking the same thing, in essence. You know, so, you know, so the question will ask, you know, "Have you ever, you know, smoked a cigarette in your lifetime?" And you will have sort of like a yes or no, and it'll go on. "How many cigarettes have you smoked in the last month?" And, you know, and it will have, it will have as option number one, "I've never smoked a cigarette." You know, so, you know, so the survey goes, as they, as they go through the analysis, they look to see, are there some surveys that are inconsistent in how students have responded to questions? And if so, those students are excluded from the analysis. So, you know, so of the 705 students that we had, 74 students opted out. It's a voluntary survey and you don't want to force someone to take a survey and have them not take it seriously. 18 students had answers that showed inconsistencies with how they were responding to questions, and those surveys were excluded from this. So we ended up with 613 students in grades seven through 12 that took the survey, which was an 87% response rate. So it's a pretty good response rate from our students. So I tagged here just a few of the findings that you'd get in this. And it gives you somewhat of the flavor of the different things that show up in the survey. And I tagged here things where Montmoi is showing up above the state average or out of the norm for, so, you know, so in the survey, when it comes to alcohol, tobacco and marijuana, Montmoi students are on par with what the state averages are saying. What we do see is that when it comes to those harder drugs, you know, everything from ecstasy to prescription abuse to heroin use, our numbers are low. But the concern is that our numbers are low and slightly above what the state averages, state averages are. A concern that's always been a big fear of mine as a former high school principal and now superintendent is that the percentage of Montmoi high school students that report that they have driven after drinking in the past month is, you know, well exceeds the state average. The number of students who report not using condoms during their last sexual intercourse is above state averages. The number of middle school and high school students reporting unwanted sexual contact in their lifetime is small, but for the high school students, it's above what the state average is. Number of middle school and high school students reporting in the past year that they felt depressed or attempted suicide, again, above state averages. And then the number of Montmoi high school students reporting to try, trying to lose weight through fasting or purging or diet pills or supplements without a doctor's advice is above state averages. You know, so there's snapshots here and there, you know, throughout the survey where we're above state averages. And again, you know, there are places where we're well within and below state averages, but there, you know, but a community ideally will look at a survey and say, "Okay, what are some of the, you know, some of the key areas of education that we need to focus on?" And I think the, when it comes to education, it's important to note that the education is not just the school educating students. It's ideally the school partnering with parents. And it's education of parents, it's education of students, and it's education of the staff. So just, I just wanted to take, you know, just one slide out of the data and have a little snapshot here. So, you know, one of the things that the survey looks at is lifetime use. So I've mentioned before, tobacco, alcohol, marijuana, the Montmoi use is within the realm of what the state is, a little bit lower, and some of those, you know, right around the same amount for others. But you'll notice that if we get down to the ecstasy, cocaine, methamphetamines, steroids and heroin, it's low. But the concern is, it's consistently slightly above. And the important thing to note is, even though you see something like 1%, 1% translates into real numbers. I mean, you know, 1% is eight students who responded to that survey. You know, so when we look at, you know, the number of students who have been sexually, contacted against their will or that have attempted suicide, and you see a small percentage, it translates into real numbers. And it's those real numbers that we also have to keep in mind when looking at a Youth Risk Behavior Survey. So I mentioned, you know, this, that there are different levels of education that ideally should happen. I, we, not having access to some grant money this time around, I took on taking the survey results and crunching the numbers. And one of the things that, in my former district, we had access to a statistician who could, who could do cross-correlations. So I took the raw data file and went and did a number of cross-correlations between questions. So, so an example of a question that you could cross-correlate, in the survey, when it comes to tobacco, alcohol, drugs, sex, there are a lot of times that the survey will ask, you know, do your, you know, what sort of, or sort of, let me put it this way, there are times where the survey will ask, you know, "Do you have an adult that you can talk to in your life?" And it'll be on a likelihood scale. You know, "I do, maybe, you know, not so much." So, you know, so if you take, you know, on this sort of connection, you know, if parents are connected to their students, if they spend time talking to their students, how's that going to potentially help when it comes to depression? You know, so if you do the cross-correlation there, students who have an adult or a family member who they can talk to about things that are important, you'll see half the number of depression. And I think on some level, that might seem obvious to us, but, but those, those things are just sort of important little nuggets to put out there on and help parents understand, you know, if, you know, that, you know, how those conversations that happen around the dinner table, they're important. When it comes to tobacco, another little cross-correlation, and I did cross-correlations for binge drinking and this, that and the other. But an example for tobacco, you know, if you send a signal that, you know, "I don't want you to smoke, I don't want to provoke, period," versus, "Just don't smoke in the house," or, you know, "I prefer that you not smoke," but it's not that strong message, you'll see three times more students smoking if the, if the message from home isn't that no, never type of message. I mentioned this bit with drove after drinking, which is the first set of bars, the, you know, the first, the first grade bar over here is roughly double what the, the orange bar, which is the Massachusetts state average. But again, messaging matters. This survey also asked our students, "Have you been in a car with a driver who has been drinking in the last month?" And our high school students here have been in a car with a driver who has been drinking slightly more than the state average. But this is a concerning bar, too. You know, this is, our middle school students say that they've been in a car with a driver who's been drinking. It's not to friends. Yeah, and so, and again, it's, you know, you know, we're the role models, too, and what we do, they do. So if we go back to that parent messaging, if you send the message, "I expect that you're not going to drink till you're 21, period," versus you send a message that, "Well, if you're going to drink, then, you know, I'm going to take the keys," and, you know, that's the, that's the type of approach. If you send that strong message, your children are three times less likely to be in that bar driving in the last month. You know, so, so we, you know, we disaggregated some of the data that way. Again, educating the students is important. And one of the important things when it comes to educating the students, from my experience, is it's norming. I think our teens really struggle with what, you know, they, you know, they have the perception, "Everybody's doing this." And, you know, as a, as a former high school principal in another district, I'd get a phone call after a dance and, you know, somebody'd say, "I heard everybody was drunk at this dance." I'm like, "I spoke to every kid as they walked through the door. Nobody, you know, smelled of alcohol, nobody was slurring the words." I, I don't, you know, but the perception, the myth, the lore. And if you can educate students as to what the norm is, then maybe they don't feel so far out of the norm if they're not doing something. For instance, the norm of Montmoi high school students is they're virgins. That's the norm. And, you know, and I suspect if you ask high school students, they might not think that that's the norm. But from the survey, that's the norm. Educating staff, important, too. You know, there are questions, you know, there are questions in the, there are questions in the survey, do, you know, do your, do you have teachers that really care about you? Do your teachers really care about you? We'll go back to that depression question. You know, the students who feel that they have teachers that really care about them have half the incidence of depression. So, you know, that's just sort of a snapshot of little things that, you know, that you, that you see in the survey. But it's, you know, there's a lot, you know, a lot of information. It covers a lot of topics. I've been working with Sheila House, the youth counselor for Harwich, and, you know, sort of sharing with her this massive slide that I've put together. And I have my staff I want to just sit down with and just double-check and error-check and make sure that we've got, that the graphs, what's in the graphs are right. And ideally turn the slides over and the data back over to Sheila and have Sheila work with some of Bill's staff and Bill's students. I think a powerful way to share youth risk data is to work with a set of students and have students present their data to the community. And ideally, what I would like to see is see students present the youth risk data to their peers and see that same set of students present it to, you know, to parents. And ideally, at those forums, see public safety, you know, school administration, school counselors there, and have at the end of that presentation, the beginning of a discussion. And hopefully, by using some of these cross, you know, these cross-correlations, you know, we can arm parents with, you know, with some concrete bits of information that, "Hey, you know, yeah, if I want to protect my students, here's some, here's some things that I could do to be, you know, see my student less likely to binge drink, less likely to smoke marijuana, less likely to, you know, to abuse prescription drugs." So it's a, you know, it's a process to start conversations. And I appreciated, at one of our school committee meetings a couple of weeks ago, that Amy was saying that on a former strategic planning committee that she was on, that at the end, you had that conversations. Okay, so now that I, now that I know, you know, how am I going to own this and move forward? And I really think that, you know, that that ending tidbit for, you know, for these forums is, okay, now, now that I know, you know, how can, you know, I as an individual and how can the community do something positively here to make a change and to not see us leading the state or being above, not leading, but being above average in certain areas? And how can we go and make our youth more safe and in a better place ultimately to be students in successful life? That's it for me.
I have two questions. First of all, the study itself, the questions, the questions prepared, you know, are they taken from a particular professional source? I mean, is there an organization that created this, or is this created in-house? I mean, is there an organization that created this, or is this created in-house?
So the, it wasn't, it wasn't created in-house, so, so the, the survey comes from, the questions come from a national survey that, that started back in 1990, and, and those questions have been sort of refined and revised. And I, you know, I, I, I also think that there, there are some things are missing. And for me, as, as I was looking at the survey and I was talking to some of the, some of the people from Barnstable County that are part of administering, you know, the, at least our local version of this, you know, the interesting thing that stuck out for me is that, that the survey, that instrument we're using doesn't ask a single question about stress, which seems to be the lead-in to the depression, self-harm, you know, and that end, you know, so, so it, you know, there's, there's certain aspects that are, that are missing there, and I think that ideally, as we look forward, you know, maybe the, you know, maybe the Cape and the, or the, you know, Barnstable County schools that choose to do the next survey will, you know, will utilize many of those same questions and then decide, okay, what are, you know, what's missing and, and add on, you know, a few here or there. Again, you, you want to keep it relatively short, but, you know, but what, you know, what little pieces are we missing? But the, it, it does come from a big, well-tested, you know, well-tested survey.
So my follow-up to that then is two parts then. Is this something that has been done in enough other places? First of all, other Cape places, and second of all, other statewide or national locations, so that we would have an additional ability to see how we compare to other Cape schools, other Massachusetts schools, well, you've got Massachusetts in here anyway, but...
What, what doesn't exist at the moment, and I think this is, this is part of the conversation, in the, where I was in suburbs, the, the body that went and did what was called the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey, you know, which covered, you know, a big swath was, you know, must have lost it. All the communities gave the same survey, it was analyzed by the same firm, and, and we would have, you know, the percentage that answered from the state, but also the percentage that answered from our local group. That, you know, that, that sort of area comparison, you know, doesn't exist yet, but, you know, that's what I would love to see us work towards.
Sure.
At one point, when I work with a whole lot of kids from Chatham and Harwich, which I don't do now, but there, this had been done in so, other school systems, and what they found at that point was that all of the Cape towns were higher in these type things, and the hypothesis was about the summer, how the summer kind of loving and the kids working till midnight at a restaurant and going out partying with much older college kids and stuff like that led into something, but not because they saw this at more than one place, it felt to me that it wasn't taken as seriously as I think maybe people felt like, oh, good, it's not just us, but it, it's a serious problem. And I know from working in Chatham, I'm not sure about Harwich whether this has been done, but Chatham has done this, I think, every year, every few years, and you could get a progress through time about, you know, whether we're making progress or not making progress. I'm not sure what's been done to work on some of these things in the past. I know they had a great health program.
Where I think the, the challenge is, is there's not a question that, that separates out Chatham from Harwich. This is, this is, this is, this really is Montomoy's baseline.
Yes.
And, you know, so we, you know, we can look at, at what's been done, and the reality is we can call up and contact other schools that, and look to see how, you know, how did our youth risk numbers on certain, you know, certain questions compare to, you know, to Barnstable's or something, but, but I don't know that it's all taken together as a nice bar for Cape.
There have been, Sheila House, the youth counselor, there have been...
Can you go up to the mic, please?
You want me to go up there? Okay. There have been surveys done in Barnstable High School, Falmouth High School, Sandwich High School, and Mashpee in the past five years, so we're the fifth district to do it. And we, there is some comparison data with Montomoy and Falmouth, but we can certainly try to get those numbers from the county. Barnstable County Regional Substance Abuse Commission, which I was appointed to about a year and a half ago, they want to help all the local coalitions and schools to, you know, move forward in, in prevention efforts, because less than one percent of all the money spent on substance abuse in Barnstable County with the study they did was on prevention, less than one percent. So, so they, the reason they appointed me was so that somebody could be working with the schools to focus on the prevention efforts. So when Scott was talking about the presentation that kids do, Barnstable County would like to be involved in helping with that, you know, community presentation.
I'd be very interested in getting some indication of what other school districts have, have found for the results of this. It's not so much to, you know, not so much to, not at all to say, well, this area's better than this area, or these kids are better than the, but, you know, and, and not to be overprotective, but we're, we're new, you know, and we're under the microscope a lot among the people in the two communities, so it would be, I'm hoping that the result will be similar. I mean, they're terrible results, but I'm hoping that they're at least similar to the other districts.
Yeah, Falmouth, like you said, that's, that it is similar, because I, I have seen those two sets of numbers on several, in several of the categories. We were up higher in marijuana use, but most, all the other categories about the same, so...
So whether this is under the strategic plan or whether this is a community group or whatever, I think that this is huge to move forward, as Scott said, with the baseline even, because everything else we're doing is measurable things, and so this would be an important aspect of that, because not only does it impact their lives in the future, but it impacts their learning.
Yeah. I agree.
Just a couple of questions, if I remember them. One was, did you say that slide number seven was an abridged version? Did they give detail, like, for instance, I would be curious to know about the Oxy class use of drugs, since that's such a huge stepping stone to heroin, particularly out here on the Cape. That was not...
So they, they would only have that show up as a, as a prescription of use, and I, and I don't, which they, which they do ask, but they don't specifically separate out OxyContin or, or, we'll call it heroin alternatives.
The other question is, do you have kind of a ballpark idea as to when those forums would happen?
You know, I'm, I'm guessing it'll probably be in the Halloween or a little bit after, it might take a while for, you know, for the, to get a group of students and to get them ready, prepared to, to present, but I, I think that's sort of the timeframe we'd be looking at.
I'd like to see some kind of a follow-up from that, because I think it's difficult to put this kind of data out there. Myself as a parent, you see this and you're like, ugh, like, if there could be some kind of follow-up as to how to, how to cope with this, or, you know, different strategies to use, or something that's more of an action step after the forum.
Sure. Couple of comments, I, referring to Brian, I agree with you, any reflection at any level is probably helpful. My best guess, experiencing this of 25 years in schools down the road, that we probably reflect in a mirror nationally, that these numbers, as surprising or shocking as they are, and it's totally voluntary and anonymous with kids writing it, but to make the best of these numbers, it really reflects that teenage society from 1970, 1980 through the 2000s, and, and it's, it's a reality that we deal with every day. One suggestion I hope, and I think that's probably where a head of it, Bill, might be, is that I would think this topic for training for our peer leaders at the high school would be ideal to launch the era off on beyond being socially connected with pizza parties and the like, with getting kids involved in school. Have them trained by trainers to present this to their classmates. Sure.
I have a question on the peer leaders. We talked about the peer leaders. Are they representative of the broad spectrum of students? If they presented to students, would the majority of the students really identify with them, or are they like unrolled students or something?
I defer to the high school folks as to how representative the peer leaders are of the, of the whole.
I think they're pretty well represented. They're, it's a course that they can sign up for and take, so there's no prerequisites, so we have a good variety, so I think they certainly will be reflective of the entire student body.
I'd like to echo Amy's comment on that seeing something after the presentations, on, you know, after it's presented to the community, where are we going to go from here with this information and how the peer leaders or how Sheila's going to help out in the schools to, to parents?
I'll give my two cents. You know, from, from my, my former district, you know, we, we got our survey results back and we were unfortunately leading the suburbs on, on every category on the substance use and abuse that you didn't want to lead.
We're number one.
And, and, and we, we had put in, deliberately put in questions to, to that survey to really get at, you know, where's it coming from? And, you know, and it became, in terms of the follow-up steps, that, you know, for us, it was really to try to create school-parent partnerships, because, you know, there's, if you, if you look at, at the alcohol that students are using, very few of our students are walking into the liquor store and buying the alcohol. You know, the alcohol comes from the fridge in their house, the refrigerator in a friend's house, the older sibling who's buying it, you know, but, but the, you know, we were finding that the bulk of all the alcohol that's, that's out there is coming from, you know, from our homes, and, you know, and so part of it was educating the parents on, on that piece, and helping, you know, helping the parents with, with little concrete nuggets on, on, there's, you know, there's a big difference between saying no and having, you know, having some sort of vague, you know, okay, we're having a party, I'm not going to go downstairs to check to see, you know, what's going on, instead of taking everyone's keys and, and just making sure that, you know, nobody's walking in without alcohol. But, you know, and, and what we did is had a series of, of forums where we had students, you know, sort of behind the, you know, the curtain, talking about what the weekend life was, if, you know, and they're like, well, you know, when you, you know, when you take our keys and you think you leave us on, you know, you know, unaccompanied, well, we leave it in the, you know, in the woods and, you know, we go out and bring it back in. And, you know, so it was trying to help parents know and to bring them into the conversation. And, you know, the good thing was, as you looked in the subsequent administration, in the subsequent administration, as we got, you know, more and more of a, a parent group, and we had, you know, we actually came up with a couple stipends for two very interested local faculty to, you know, to facilitate these conversations with parents. You know, we start to see, you know, instead of being the lead in the area, to, you know, to be below the suburban average, which is ideally where you want to see your numbers that, and with license on it.
Just, just to clarify, I mean, what are you going to do for us as parents, but how is it going to, other than just giving the information, where would be a good way to go as a parent and have those conversations? I'm sure that was, I wasn't intending it to be a, what are you going to do to fix this, action step, but how is it going to work as a community to get everybody on the same page?
I know that, oh, I don't know how many years ago, it could be 20 years ago, and in Chatham, they had a program that was not totally unfunded, and they asked some of us that worked in the schools to lead something that was called Together We Can, and what it would be, would be like, I think it started for third grade, third and fourth grade parents met with one faculty member. Turned into, a, a parent would take over after a while, but at first it started for, with volunteers from, it didn't have to be the staff. And then another group had fifth and sixth and so forth, every two grade levels, and they would talk about something, and it could be, a parent might say, oh, it's around Valentine's Day, and my fifth grader has a boyfriend, and I don't know, she wants to go down to her own clothing and get him a sweater. And so that parent who, that was her first, her oldest child, other parents said, if my kid had a boyfriend, which they don't, but if they did, they might give him a card. And the parent was just very gratified. And then as you get older, they talk about a lot of things like this, that, you know, there are certain houses that have parties and, and you might want to check into what goes on at those locations, because a lot of parents, if they have had older children, might already know that, but if it's their first, they might not know. That, that kind of thing is very helpful.
Scott, I just want to add one more thing. The, the Barnstable County Regional Substance Abuse Commission has a newsletter online, an e-newsletter, so I highly recommend subscribing to it, because it, it talks about all the initiatives that they're, you know, it's, you know, we've been building capacity for a year and a half, and now we have sort of a plan, a five-year plan. And the Montomoy District in Harwich and Chatham is a cluster, was one of the seven regions chosen, so they want to do everything they can to support the schools in, you know, saying what are the next steps, that kind of thing. And I think that they would be probably part of that public forum, as well as the EMTs and the police and stuff like that, so they, they're just a great resource.
How do you find out to sign up for this?
If you just go on the website, Barnstable County Substance Abuse Commission, it'll say subscribe to our e-newsletter. They also have an offshoot called the Massachusetts Opioid Addiction Prevention Council, and that's another group I'm on that's really good, that's been doing a lot of education to physicians about prescribe, over-prescribing, especially to student athletes and, you know, stuff like that, people that can come in and talk to athletic directors, and just really educating the public about what's going on and what support groups are available. So both are great, okay? Thank you.
Moving on to the Montomoy Regional High School Program of Studies' purpose and update.
So there was a request that we revisit the program of studies and whether, whether or not courses that aren't being one be deleted on the, the program of studies as it's published online. Just to clarify, one piece of it, on the, in your packet on the back is page six from the program of studies that talks about course availability, that just indicates that, that elective courses are, are based on student interest, and talks about how on occasion some courses may, may not meet minimum enrollment standards, and the students will be asked to select alternatives, the electives may be offered on a rotating basis. It's, it's important to also note just what the purpose is. The, the purpose of the program of studies is for students to sign up for courses, but it, it also, by having that program of studies online, and you may have courses that... and you may have courses that have left your course offerings, but you still keep those courses in the book for the period of time that your students who are with you are applying to colleges in case a counselor or an admissions counselor to college wants to go back and look to see, you know, what some course that Rich taught, you know, three years ago, you know, did and what, you know, what it was and was all about. So, you know, so there's a reason why you still keep the program that you have there and available. And there's a reason why you don't go and keep calling the program every time a course might not have the number of students to take it.
The discussion last time was not about deleting courses from the 2015 to 2016 program of studies. The discussion was that there should be some indication because you have 2014 and 2015 posted, 2015, 2016, you know, prior years. I didn't look for prior years. But when you put an indication on there that that is a particular school year, what was requested and agreed upon in our meeting was that online in the program of studies, any study, any program, any courses that were not offered or are not offered in a particular year, there would be an indication, the course would not be deleted. There would be an indication that it was not being offered that school year. That's what we asked for, that's what was agreed upon.
I don't know if that was agreed upon to happen. I know it was put out there as a request to happen.
And then it was, there was some slight discussion about the fact that it was the beginning of a school year and it couldn't happen right away. And that it would happen, but not right away because it was the beginning of the school year.
I don't know, I'll have to go back and watch that meeting to see if it was said that it will happen. I'll have to get back to you on that.
I will watch as well and then I will, then we'll see.
Well, if I could make a comment, Karen, I know there wasn't a vote on that.
No, there wasn't a vote.
And so when you said we agree. You mean individually?
No, I mean Scott said that that would be done.
I don't recall saying that it would be done. I think we recall training that it was a logistical challenge to do and I'm not sure how useful it would be, but...
I think it would be very useful. If we need to take a vote on it, why don't we take a vote on it?
Do you have a motion?
Well, the first question is Ken's, right?
Well, they're PDFs. I mean, a PDF is a Word document that you turn into a PDF document. You take the Word document, you change it, put it back into a PDF and you upload it onto the website. We're not, we weren't, I'll speak for myself, but I believe I was backed up by other people. We weren't proposing to take, I wasn't proposing to take those courses off. I was just asking that there be some indication that they weren't offered this particular school year.
Karen?
I think, and I could be wrong, but I think in Chatham, they frequently offered certain courses alternate years. And it would be in a recurring basis because it was a small school. And what I remember is that they'd have the ones that weren't offered every year, like in a different area or something. It would, I mean, it makes perfect sense what you're saying about the college people and having them somewhere there. But, you know, I don't know what the difficulty would be to do that.
I think there's a little bit of a difference between wording because the program of studies is the course offering. So those are the courses that were offered to the students to select from back in the spring, late winter, early spring. So those were the offerings to all students who signed up for courses versus courses that are currently being run in the school. And I think that the program of studies is a course offerings list. And those offerings haven't changed because the students have already signed up for the, it's, I think it's a challenge because you're looking at the program of studies for 2015, 2016 as if that's what's currently happening in the school year. And this was a document that was presented to the students last winter. And I don't think it's, I think it's two different concepts. A course offerings list versus a current class running or courses that are currently being run in the high school.
I would agree, except for the fact that there are some courses listed on there that aren't being offered and it says that they will be offered in the 2016, 2017 year.
Amy, you understand?
I just wondered, was there a reason other than difficulty for not making a notation, like whether it's highlighted or has a bullet next to it if it's being offered over the course of the year?
Why should not do it? I think it's just, it's just time enough on Bill's staff to go in and revise, maybe revise, update and publish a new one.
I still don't understand, I guess, a basic concept. The program of studies is a list of, the program of studies is provided to the students and they use that to select courses that they would like to take. Is that right?
Right.
So at the time that the program of studies is created, you don't know what classes are actually going to be offered because you have to wait and see how many students sign up for those classes.
Correct.
So once the program of studies is created, the students then choose their classes for that year. And then those choices are essentially locked in because they start school. Then the program of studies at that point becomes pretty much an irrelevant document. I mean, what does it make, what difference does it make if in December, the program of, somebody takes the trouble of updating the program of studies to say, not enough people signed up, so we didn't offer it this year? What's accomplished by that? If it's used to set up course schedules, then why does it need to be updated to reflect what the students are not taking? That's what I don't understand.
For transparency purposes, for anyone who might be looking at the website, whether they be in the school district or not, whether it be, you know, somebody who was thinking about transferring to the school district for the coming fall.
So do you feel it's kind of like false advertising?
I do.
So can there be an addendum to it that shows what, just a one-pager that shows what classes were offered? So the program of study stays exactly as it is? And then there is, I don't know how you would phrase it, but the classes that ran for 2000, currently running?
You'd probably be better off doing those that did not, shorter list.
Oh, okay. Or classes that didn't run for 2015, 2016.
I suspect, I suspect publishing a master schedule might be, again, I don't know who's going to read it.
Yes, as Scott said, I mean, at this point it's there for people double checking from colleges. So, you know, they're not, they're looking to see what a course offering covered.
Well, Karen's saying that prospective students are looking at it and thinking that perhaps it gives them the idea that these are always offered.
Well, there'll be a new course of study put out for the 2016, 2017 school year.
Yeah, so you're just talking about somebody who comes in the middle of the school year?
The middle or the beginning of the next school year.
Well, if they come at the beginning of the next school year, there'll be a new program of studies that will reflect the courses that are being offered. See what I mean?
Karen?
You know, I really don't see it as a major issue that we should be spending this much time. I don't see this false advertising. I think it's as transparent nationally as all course of studies are. You know, I think of the general public. When you go to a moderate or a nice restaurant, they have a menu. And you walk in and you sit down and you give an audit. On occasion, a waitress will come by and say, well, we can't fill out that swordfish. It's off tonight. That doesn't mean they repeat the entire menu for that particular evening. Those things happen. Secondly, I think that students coming in midterm, be it three or twelve or fifteen kids, I think their need to serve when they arrive and they say, hi, mom, dad, I'm his counselor. And they begin to review and they say, gee, I saw something. I'd like to take that biotech. That's in our course of studies and only three signed up. We are not offering it. It's January one now, we welcome to school and here are the offerings. I think that's a very normal way. I don't think it is something that the parents would say, oh, my goodness, I wouldn't have come here if I knew that. So I don't really, I don't, I see it as make-work for our staff. And already we've got ourselves in a major transition that we certainly want to have to go through. And I don't see it as a violation of the kids' knowledge about what they would like to sign up for. All their mothers and dads. And I, Karen, last week or two weeks ago, I thought, my impression was that, was there a way, because I do ask the principal, were there ten or twelve or fifteen courses that were offered but then not created? And could they be eliminated? That isn't what I, that isn't what you were saying. Then I'll withdraw that. But my objection is obviously, I think really, especially after that last topic about high risk, all the other topics we need to kind of delve into. So I for one would like to see the course of study left in the hands of the administration. I think they, it spells out exactly what we'd like the kids to be invited to.
Karen?
A little bit, Carrie reminded me about the concern about anything being not offered again. I understand that it might need to be on there for colleges. But if we know that we're not going to be offering accounting two or I don't know what course, some course, that maybe an asterisk could be there or it could be at the bottom saying, updated, updated business courses will be offered or something. Because then if we know something's not going to be offered, then that would be misleading.
But if it's not offered, it's not in the program of studies.
They just said that it has to be there till the graduating kids leave.
And I think in that case, there would be a notation that it's not offered this year. You know, so it's, so you have it as the menu that you're, you know, that you're choosing from. And if there are certain things that, you know, you aren't going to, that aren't on the menu this year, you indicate that in the program. Because it's what the students are using to sign up for the courses in that particular year. And that's why I think when you were saying that Chatham would have some, you know, it would say that this is, I, in my former school, we had certain classes that we'd say only offered on odd years.
Karen?
First of all, to go back to what Carrie was saying about menus. In some restaurants, they do reprogram the menu every night. When there's a change, because there is a change.
Yeah. But I'd also go on to say, Karen, when you arrive at an airline ticket and a flight has been canceled or if you go to buy a new power or use cat, they sometimes have advertised that it's available, but when you arrive, it isn't. So whether I'm mistaken and I'm going to the right restaurants, I, it was my analogy. But that's where my mind is coming out of as far as the course of studies concerned. I like it to leave it in the hands of the principal and the assistant principal. And I think it's a product that is, has quality in it.
But in some of these cases, these courses were not taken off the program of studies or weren't being offered because of insufficient signups. Those are the ones that I really have an issue with because there were insufficient signups.
Amy, you understand?
I was just going to say, in terms of transparency or prospective students looking at the school, what I found very helpful is the, and maybe you can put, and maybe it is in something on the website or attached to the program of studies, is that diagram that showed the process of how the program of studies is offered and then the students, that diagram that you showed as part of your slide presentation that evening. You know what I'm referring to?
Was this me or Bill's?
I believe, I'm not.
I think it might have been Bill's.
Maybe it was Bill. Yes, it was. It went through each of the steps. And it was very clear and...
And it may be possible to, you know, to publish something akin to the board that Bill was showing in his, in his presentation that, you know, that will allow, you know, students or families at home to go through and potentially problem solve. It, you know, it becomes the list of what we offer, not necessarily what we don't.
I guess I'll make a motion. I'm not sure exactly how to do it, but I'd like to make a motion that the program of studies for 2015, 2016 be amended so that there's some indication of the courses that are not being offered in the current year, some notation for each of them.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No?
No.
Saying? Does not move. We'll move on to the Chatham and Harvich Elementary School handbook revisions. You want to do it tandem? You want to do it separately?
I'm Robin Mill, the principal at Chatham Elementary. I sent over a memo of what we had drafted by last Friday. But on your table, I believe you have the version, the one that finally came through and we kind of fine-toothed everything. But I did list all the different changes. The goal was to make all the handbooks somewhat aligned as far as they were appropriate for the age level. And so that the language from PK to twelve for families, they would know this kind of language all the way along. So I listed where we made the changes in Chatham and based off of what the reason, the rationale was for those. A couple of just other updates were the procedural, you know, some of the dates have changed, times have changed, staff has changed. At the time that I sent the memo out to you, I had three things to do. One was to add all the behavioral, implementation of positive behavioral implementation, rubrics and behavior scales that they had created in Chatham last year. Those are added to your most current version. And then I also had to admit, as part of section appendix A, for the last opt-out, there was a sexual education thing. We didn't need that at the elementary, so I eliminated that as well.
Did it? No, just joking. The elementary school handbook in Harvich is not exactly the same as Chatham's and that's one of our goals together this year is with the school councils to look at the format, to try to make it more uniform. But you should also have a copy of the edits that we put in. They were highlighted. I don't know if you got it in color, if it comes out in color, but...
Not in color, but you can see the highlights.
One of the glaring ones that somehow or another we skipped, missed last year was the mission statement. Is the correct mission statement, not the old one. Apologize for that, to anybody that noticed that. The dates, of course, get updated every year. Our curriculum nights have moved this year from where they used to be. And I will apologize for one typo. In page twenty-seven, the title one, coordinator, you have your version that says Marcy Dugas, but Marcy's no longer with us and Dr. Blanchard's name will be edited in that and it'll be on the website.
That was a record sample.
Compliment is speaking. Support it.
Next on the agenda is the five-year fiscal projections.
Sure. So you have these in your packets and I gave a copy to Selecton Castle, who happens to be with us, happens to be with us as well. One thing I want to, I want to emphasize is on next Monday, we will be sharing a five-year projection and doing it on the same night that... projection and doing it on the same night that Town Administrator Clark will be sharing his with the Board of Selectmen. And Katie and I were mentioning this to, to the Chair of the Howard Selectmen and also the Town Manager, that the town has, has on some level the luxury of being able to forecast everything from payroll that's beginning in July. For us, our first payroll for this year happened on the fifteenth of this month, so, you know, so this is putting together a five-year projection off of, you know, the payroll that literally just happened, so, you know, so what you have in front of you has barely had time to cool. In fact, Katie and I were, you know, were discussing, you know, ways to best try to present, present the numbers and, and try to be as transparent in terms of what we presented and shared last, last year. The other thing that is in the back of your packets that we will be sharing and presenting, and I'll briefly spend some time just talking about this, is the enrollment projection. So I, I put on there, you know, the enrollment on where, you know, where we are this year, but, you know, where we were the last two years, and we spent a couple of minutes on that as well.
So first of all, I want to apologize, the flash drive is on top of my desk that has all of this information, and there's a lot of data here that we just, you know, we need to digest, and as Scott mentioned, we've been cranking out the numbers, and because there were so many changes within personnel with people leaving and others coming in, and salaries, schedules, plugging in the numbers took a little bit of extra time. But what we wanted to do was just really see really where we were on, in regards to our first five-year plan that we put together last year, how on track are we, what kinds of information do we have, you know. One of the messages that we were hearing is that the towns are really interested in, you know, when are we going to reach a level of stability? And I think that when we made the adjustment, but this year to accommodate the, you know, the reduction in the school choice numbers, you know, we, we adjusted that this year and then, you know, the other wild card, of course, is the use of excess and deficiency to offset some of the expenditures. So what you have in front of you, as Scott mentioned, it just, and I'm going to just give broad picture of what you're looking at, is first you're going to drop, draw, square, and half is going to go to. So the first one is looking at, you know, where, plugging in, in the rectangle, we plugged in the actual FY15 numbers, and so those are on the first page, and then we could go back. And then the second page is, is, that's the bigger picture, then the second page is breaking it down by salaries, expenses, fixed charges such as our health insurance, et cetera, capital and maintenance, and debt. And then the, the last two pages is really a comparison, I mean, the, the next page after that is a comparison, how, how did we measure up? And I think that's pretty telling, that, that third page to see where we were off of the projection, because really what we want to try to hopefully do is just add on to it and only add 2021, because we, you know, our, our projections are in line, and part of what's helped us is when we did this first five-year projection, our unit aid contracts weren't settled. So now we have a teacher's contract that goes through 2018, our custodians through 2016, and the technicians through 2017, and unit, the other ones still in the process of being negotiated. So we had some, and the teachers are the bulk of the salary number that we have, so through 2018 we can plug in real numbers, as opposed to estimates.
How about, I'll just quickly run through some high-level thing on the first, on the, on the first page, just, what, what appears in the orange box running towards the, the bottom is, that was, that was the bottom-line assessment increases that caught everybody's attention at the Selectmen's meeting in December, where, where we were at the time, you know, projecting roughly a 14% increase in FY16. And at the time, the big driver, or, you know, probably the biggest driver in FY16 was we had debt for this building that didn't exist in the prior fiscal year, that hit, you know, so the, the, you know, the whole debt hits that first year, and then for the next twenty-five years?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five years continues to get less and less and less. So, so that was, that was one of the big drivers. What we did in response is, is we talked about what would, what would happen if we used excess and deficiency to help offset and buffer that, that 14%. So what you see immediately above that is, is really where our budget ended up, yeah, which was roughly a 10% increase after we applied $600,000 of excess and deficiency. You'll notice that, that we, we have in seventeen, we're using some excessive deficiency, 131,000 instead of 600,000, then 133, 118, 45. The reason, the reason that we plug those numbers in there is the, the orange box that we presented to the Selectmen was using excess and deficiency in those amounts, you know, so it's, it's trying to come up with an apples-to-apples comparison. So you'll, you'll note that at the moment, the, in FY17, it says 6.5% increase, and the driver there is there's less excess and deficiency is being used, so it's, it's creating a situation that you would have a higher amount of your, you know, so you're, you're needing to use more, you know, more tax dollars to support the, the school's budget. But if you, you know, if you go up to, you know, if we kind of jump up for the moment to the very top line, and look at what we could say is, if you think of the top line as that, that total operating cost, you start to see the stability that people are, are looking for. You're, you're seeing that, you know, we're, we're hitting a, a relatively level, you know, level place in the, you know, going from, you know, roughly, you know, roughly four, you know, in the, in the fours, you know, going progressively down, dipping just slightly below four. What is, if we jump briefly to the third page, if you look at FY, if you look at FY17, you see a big reduction in the salary line, and that in part is we have fewer staff, because remember, the FY16 budget is a reduced staff budget, so there's fewer staff, and you're seeing now the, you know, the benefits of that early retirement incentive and how that's supporting and helping the budget in the out-years on the salary lines from FY17, 18, and on. What starts to really hurt us is if you looked on the fixed charges and other district costs that, you know, that in FY17 is essentially a quarter of a million dollars, and then it goes, you know, pushing a half million dollars, and by, by FY20, it's a million-dollar increase over, over the initial projection that we did last year, that driver is health insurance. Okay, so, so last year, you know, to, to kind of put this into perspective, in this, roughly this time last year, we got the, the budget assumptions, and we were told by the Town of Howard to plug in, I believe, 4% for health insurance. And the tea leaves, by the time we got to December, said we shouldn't have 4% plug-in, 8%. Well, the tea leaves now are, no, don't plug in 8%, plug in 12%. So, so the difference between 8% health insurance, which is what the orange box was based on, and where we see health insurance going, you know, looking forward, is, you know, is a million-dollar swing as we look in this, in this five-year range. And so our, our salaries and wages are actually, you know, in a good place. It's, it's the fixed costs that are really impacting us, you know, quite significantly as we look forward into the out-years. And, you know, that's, that's the punchline, as I said, it's, this is, you know, this is hot off, you know, hot off the presses, and, and that's, that's sort of the story that, you know, that we, you know, we begin with, that we're, you know, we're definitely in a much better place i- in terms of what that bottom-line number looks like, this year going to the Selectmen than last year, and it's still high, and, and a, a big chunk of that are, is a, a, a change in, you know, going from an 8% health insurance estimate of what we should be expecting to a 12%.
And just to add to that, in the budget, when you look at the insurances, it includes dental, et cetera, et cetera, that's a $4 million budget line item. So when you add 12% year in, each year, that's a, it's a big number, one of the biggest numbers in the budget.
Steve.
Go ahead.
I have a question and perhaps a suggestion. Firstly, on the first page again, in the capital line for fiscal '20, you have a significant increase, so that must be a particular project that's in, being planned for, right?
Ah, yes, I forgot to mention those. So, so we have, we have fiscal '20 is $1.7 million of roots.
At the elementary school in Chatham?
Chatham Elementary and the middle school.
You might want to put that.
Yeah.
Right.
So we have, we have a little narrative to, to go with.
Yeah, but in writing would be, have it in.
And another question slash suggestion. We've had some difficulty in the past with certain Selectmen being able to read our, our five-year projections and drawing somewhat wrong conclusions about what increases are that we're requesting. The, as I understand it, the, the emboldened percentages, which are the most relevant to the towns, are the second level on this front page, correct? Those are the, those are proj- the projected percentage increases in the assessments to the towns, correct?
Well.
Well, the first emboldened are the in, the projected increase in our operating costs.
Correct.
And if you move down to the next one, it's, it's.
Right, so that's, that's the assessment.
Right, so that's the, that's the col- that's the row, row, column, row. That's the row that matters most to the Selectmen, and I would.
Bottom.
Pardon?
Bottom.
No, not the bottom row at all, it's the, it's the second row down.
No, it's the row above the line that says less E and D used, those percentages above that line?
Oh, they are. Well, no, 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 because, no, this is what I'm, this is what I'm trying to stress.
Okay.
You're including, you know, we had the same problem last year, when they thought we were talking, when, when we were including the debt.
Yeah, okay.
They were furious that we were going to have a 14% increase because of the debt.
Right.
It took us a whole six months to get them to understand that the debt is something they bought into years ago, and is not something we have any control over. In theory, the only thing we have control over is the operating expenses and the capital expenses. So I think it's important to stress to the Selectmen by another colored box, or some other way, is that it is, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's the second row of, of emboldened percentages is what they should be looking at in terms of what we'll be requesting from the towns in terms of budget increases.
Right.
That they have, that we have any control over.
And even, and even some, even some of those.
We don't have control over.
We don't, because the, you know, that, that operating includes, includes, you know, salaries, expenses, and fixed costs.
But if, if there was going to be a headline about what percentage the towns are going to be asked for in any given year, those would be the only numbers that we would want to be on the headline.
Correct, the 5.2% increase in FY17 for operating, right.
So I would, I would beg you on Monday to stress that line to the Selectmen, so don't go through another six months where they want to know why it's going up 30%.
Understood.
Yeah. There's no 30% here.
I understand. That's an exaggeration, but I'm, I'm referring to the fact that when we included the debt.
Right.
We took a, a lot of heat for that.
And then if we excluded, we'd take heat as well.
Well, but we will be, I'm not saying taking the numbers out.
No, 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 I know exactly what you're saying, I do.
Make those a very large font.
So on page, on page four is, is a summary of excess and deficiency, because on that, on that first page, there's, there's an ability, just as we did last year, to, to use excess and deficiency to buffer certain fiscal years, and, you know, so, so I use the same numbers that we presented last year in Howard, and, and we, we use those numbers with this, this vision looking forward that the school district at some time, at some point would reach 4% in excess and deficiency, 4% of our operating budget. And we, we can, you know, we can achieve that, yeah, and, you know, so I was, I was playing around with the excess, you know, the excess and deficiency numbers, so, you know, so by, by fiscal year '21, we, you know, we hit roughly that, that 4%, and, you know, and we start seeing the bulk of what would go into excess and deficiency would start to roll into, into future fiscal years. That again presumes that we're not tapping into it, you know, tapping into it earlier. You'll, you'll also, you'll also note that we're not plugging in a number for, you know, how much excess and deficiency is available to roll into the next fiscal year, because at the moment we don't have FY15's excess and deficiency certified, so we don't know what that number is and how it adjusts these numbers going forward. But, you know, but it's, it, it was the, the goal, a- as we get to the end of this projection, that, that ideally by FY20, we're up to 4% in excess and deficiency, and that then in the future fiscal years, we would be able to take essentially the bulk of what would, you know, would arrive in excess and deficiency and roll it over. That's an ideal world.
I think we forgot a conversation about starting a stabilization fund as well as having excess and deficiency, so, so I would, that we need to pare back on that 280 and maybe start the stabilization fund so that, something we have for those capital.
Right.
Or mid-year occurrences to.
And I, I think, I think it all, it all, I think is very relevant to the conversation that I think the committee will have here in a few minutes on, upon how to address the MOU from the Selectmen too, but we'll, we'll, we'll get there. The, then just, just a, a quick good news thing on page five. One of the things that we did in, I believe it was November of 2014, is we presented a slide that looked roughly like this, except for the last little section, that, so, so we're coming towards the closeout on the construction project, and, you know, so a- at the moment, the presentations that we've given to the Selectmen is that, you know, that the town, you know, the taxpayers are roughly looking, are expecting to be paying, you know, $31.7 million to fund this, this high school. Because of the good fiscal management that, that Don and Katie have put into this construction project, our borrowing costs are significantly less than what we had anticipated back in 2014, to the tune of $3.2 million. So, you know, so the taxpayers, you know, the taxpayers are, are going to greatly benefit by how this project has been borrowed for, and, and that's, you know, that's something that Don, you know, really in particular deserves a lot of, of credit on. So, you know, so we, you know, we've taken out a $28 million note for the project. At the moment, we only anticipate needing to take out a half-million dollar note, that we, it would be a state note paid off after, over the period of five years, so, you know, so by the end, you know, by the end of fiscal '21, that, you know, that half mil- half-million dollar notes pay off. But we went in, in the process of putting together this five-year plan, worked with Kate Cott five to get a feeling for, that note would be issued about a year from now, what, you know, what do they see as the percentage rates there and what the costs would be. So, so those costs on that note have been plugged into this five-year plan, but this is, this is huge savings for the taxpayers in, in our two towns, and that's one of the things I, I think it's important for us to share at the Selectmen's meeting.
It's also important, even though, you know, we are talking about closing out, it will probably be October of 2016, a year from now, when we will get the final award amount, grant award from. award from MSEA when they audit and they close out the whole project. So even though we talk about closing it out, so in October of 2016 is when we will really, really know just exactly what that additional amount of money that we need to fund is. So when people talk about, we've referenced closing out in October, it's a year from now.
Back on the first page again, on the first row of highlighted budget increases, projected annual increases. If I understand from what's been said tonight, a significant portion of those increases is the health insurance.
That's correct.
Yes.
So is it possible to come up with the number, the percentage that reflects the amount that is not the health insurance? In other words, the selectmen's, the dream come true would be a 2.5% increase every year. And as I have a vague memory from some discussions, our health insurance goes up more than 2.5%. Our budget, just because of health insurance, would eat up about 2.5% or some high number like that. So would it be difficult to determine, since it's one thing that the town has to do as well as we have to do, and theoretically, there would be some sympathy from them?
We belong in the same group.
Right.
Built the same, right.
Right, so is it possible to determine what percentage of these increases is not as a result of health insurance increases? You follow what I'm saying?
I do follow.
We pull the fixed costs, yeah?
Because then we'd be saying the actual operating expenses, other than health insurance, are not going up 5%, 4%, 4%, 4%. I bet it's going to be a much smaller number.
A comment and then a question came here, Scott. Comment, serving as a member of the building committee the past couple of years, I too would like to come in, Katie yourself as well as Don. How often do we hear and read on the Cape and off Cape, how public buildings, specifically schools, have cost overruns, contract errors, very high percentage of change orders after the plan has been laid out? And so those folks look at that and they either go back to the taxpayers for an increased assessment or even more bonding. So, and I know we're talking apples and oranges when we're talking about the general operating budget on the first two pages for both towns' selectmen, but also this construction project. There is monies here, we have close to $8 million plus of savings due to extremely accurate planning. So Ed McManus and Dave Whitaker, I heard that name in my ear, did a terrific job with those 20 members of the building committee, so that's something for the record. It was one of my highlights the last couple of years, we got to that, to watch how that thing worked out. Going back to Brian's comment, we're looking at a projection in September. We've got a longer own in five or six months to see if this changes up or down, and obviously, after we benefit the kids and the staff and what is needed, we'd like to think that that number, now I'm looking at the top number, 4.9 projected, so that number optimistically might go down. We know part of that is because of this increase in insurance, and I think that'd be a good idea to break that out to say that it affects 1%, 1.5% of the grand total, both sides of this project, municipal, they live with that too. My question is this. Briefly, Scott, yes, the chatting about the projection and maybe somewhat better news than 14% to launch, that the 5.2 figure projected '17, that doesn't include capital or debt, or does it?
No, it does not.
That's broken out by that 5.2. Down below that is the inclusion of that, okay, good, thanks.
Karen?
A couple of questions. One is, how much could we put in here for OPEP?
1%.
Very good question, that's right here.
We always start out, unfortunately, we start out every budget season putting, budgeting 1% of our payroll for OPEP, which would be just over, just about $200,000. We start out with that, and the first year, we ended up with 50. This year, we ended up with 60. So it's always a place when we cut. So we started out again with the 1% funding the payroll.
So that is built into these?
That is built into this, yes.
It just seems like, I mean, it's definitely not irresponsible, because we've got to educate the kids and there are other things that are primarily important for this year, but on range.
We should be putting away $2.3 million a year.
Yeah, I know, but that's what we have to get the public to understand. They're going to pay it one way or the other. The other thing is, what percentage of E and D are we using? Maybe, I guess what I'm trying to really get at is, on years where we've had a lot of increase, like this was a very good example of increase in healthcare. We were 12.4%, it's 12%. Well, that's a huge difference. You know, sometimes we'll have like a couple of families that have multiple severe special needs, children move in. Can we get some estimate of what our worst years have been on something like that?
Because...
I did a five-year projection for Scott when he first came here.
Okay.
So he has that.
Are we including worst-case scenarios in here? Because I felt really uncomfortable planning out, saying what we could guess to do for more than a year or two, because even a year or two, such big surprises can happen, and the regular townspeople don't get it. They're like, well, cut something, but we don't want to devastate our school, which is what it would be unless we had an automatic surprise override then. So that's the caution.
Well, I think it's really more of like a roadmap and a projection. You know, somebody could move in tomorrow, a boiler could go next week, and it's a plan. And right now, it's a draft with a capital D, it is September 23rd. We haven't even closed out the prior year yet, but it's good to be looking ahead, but it's not, we can be planned, what is it, plan for the, hope for the best and plan for the worst, maybe?
Right, but you know, when we give a projection like that, I want it to be clear to the townspeople in the selectmen that there's no way we can know this, we can get a good guess on it, but I don't want to hear them saying later on, well, you told us it'd be this amount.
Good luck with that.
Well, I mean, we have to make it clear in the papers or whatever, that we cannot, I mean, it would be, I don't want to be misleading.
And that's why it's important to state the assumptions. And so we went into last year stating the assumptions behind what's in the lunchbox. The assumption at the time was 8% health insurance. Right now, everyone's saying that 8% is pie in the sky. So that's one of the things that we articulate, that this is the new assumption behind this one, and here's one of the reasons why, why things are changing. We assume, we assume that state aid is going to stay the same, that we assume that, so all of these things that we count on and rely on to support the budget, there's an assumption that that's going to be, that's going to be level looking, looking out in the future, and you don't know.
And we have, what will be nice is, at the end of this year, we will have three years of actuals, so you can be looking at where we started and how things are progressing along, and if there are any spikes, or how consistent things are. It's nice to look back and then look ahead as well.
Karen?
I just wanted to commend Brian on his close reading of this and his suggestions. I am interested as well in seeing what this projected annual percent increase is without the health insurance included in there, and those are good points.
I have a question. On the health insurance, being a healthcare provider and knowing that about three years ago, insurance companies cut what they paid psychotherapists like 20% and 30% over other years, that I have to think that the insurance companies themselves are making much, much larger profit.
What we have to understand about health insurance that is regionally, it's a regional issue, is that unlike the suburbs where Framingham will have a hospital and Concord will have a hospital, and you have all these different options, there's Cape Cod Hospital. And you, so we're, the state's GIC lists hospitals as three tiers, from expensive to least expensive. And the hospitals that we have access to on Cape Cod are the highest, most expensive hospitals in the state. So we're sort of stuck in a geographical area that has the highest, sort of most expensive options that are sort of underlying what we're having to then pay in health insurance costs for our employees.
Maybe we could do some lobbying or something, but maybe that's because we have such a portion of elderly or something, I don't know. But that's helpful, I didn't know.
Also in your packet is enrollment projections, it's important to note that these are essentially The true enrollment projections that the state goes off of is that all school districts do a data dump on October 1st, and that's what you sort of compare year-to-year enrollments on. This isn't October 1st, but there's an expectation, selectmen's meeting that we will look at enrollment. So here's the pluses, minuses, and emphasis on this chart. So I've given you the enrollment for the last three years broken out by Chatham, Harwich, and Choice. I also, in the last two years, have broken out and kind of indicated, here's where we see enrollment increases or decreases by grade level, but the more important one, the most telling one, is by cohort. And so if we look at last year, the minus 16 in grade six and the minus 13 in grade nine are the things to look at. Those are the spots that we have been hemorrhaging kids as systems here in Massachusetts or here in Chatham, Harwich for a while, because in grade six, we have kids that leave for the charter school, Lighthouse Charter, and in grade nine, we have students that leave for Sturgis, or NOSID, or Cape Tech. So good news here, our enrollment as a school district is going up over the three years from 1902 to 1961 to 1965. What's concerning, and I think this is sort of something to emphasize as we go into our conversations on Monday, I think that if you look at what happened particularly at the high school level, and you look at that change in cohort, you see these large negative numbers, and that's what happens when there's uncertainty in the system. So when we and our select boards are engaged in conversations on what the budget's going to look like and what the educational program is going to look like for kids, families get worried, and families look elsewhere. And our high school enrollment is roughly where it was last year. Our high school enrollment could have and should have been significantly higher, and I think that that has a lot to do with the instability that we all experienced in the last part of the year. And I've talked with Mike, and that's something that he and I, and I'm sure that many in this committee, and hopefully many on the Harwich Selectmen that don't want to see, reoccur. Because every one of those negatives, unless they went to private school, has a financial impact on our bottom line, and at the end of the day, a financial impact on the town's bottom line. And you take all those negatives and multiply it by $5,000 potentially, it's a lot of money.
Or 15.
Right?
Yes.
Or the charter. Scott, do you know on the, where it's the grade six minus 16 that lost mostly to charter, how many of the 16 were charter?
And that's, my assumption is that that's what we, that's what we would lose in a particular year.
Like this year, for instance?
I...
For the current sixth grade?
Don't know yet.
Okay.
So until October 1st, we don't report and everybody, nobody's reporting to the state where the kids are. So this is, all I can report is where the kids are from that we have, and it won't be until sometime middle of next month that we'll get a report coming from the state that will indicate where our children that aren't with us, so the Choice students, where they are. So the 16 and 13 in yellow and green, that's what I've used to sort of model out, and that 16 is, if you look at the number of students that it looks like we lost in, if we go to grade six in 2015, 2016, it looks like there's roughly 17 students there. So that 16 number seems, looking back over the history that predated me, to be a reasonable number to model off of, and likewise, the green 13, if we look at the number of students that going from eighth grade to ninth grade might end up going to Cape Tech, or to NOSID or Sturgis, it gives us a reasonable number to look at and say, what do we expect to see for high school populations? And we were projecting that in the neighborhood of fiscal year 2020, that this building would be, would be almost filled. And we're seeing now that it looks like, based on the current trend, that there's going to be a little bit of space, not much, it'll be pretty tight, the building is booked for 700, but we'd be projecting a number around 673.
Karen?
Just to add on to the conversation, similar to the health insurance, as we, and then tie in the thought, I've strategic planned for the next three to five years, I would think we would pull out Cape Tech and treat that as a separate natural transition versus the other choices kids make, i.e. Lighthouse, Sturgis, and let's just say NOSID, and make for a plan of three to five years after this past year settles in, to see what action steps we as a committee, and we as an administration, and as staff and parents can make to make those choices less each year. And that's something we have some control over by educating and highlighting for the fifth grade kids that we command in our schools, and invite them to seriously consider to stay with us, the same way with NOSID and youngsters who may be on the Sturgis. I don't think we'll ever see that number get down to zero, because they're apparent choices, and that's fine. But it's something we should look at as our middle school settles down with the new principal and the new program, and the high school with the scheduling that we've moved into, that we should be able to see some positive numbers, or I should say subtract those numbers in the next couple of years, so.
Just, the last thing to point out here is, at the bottom of each of the year reports, there's a breakdown of what percent are Harwich, what percent are Chatham, so those two numbers would add up to 100. And then just what percent of our total enrollment are comprised of school Choice students. You'll note, looking at those numbers, that the Harwich percentage is going down. Until we actually get the report back on where the students ended up, it's hard to actually say, is Harwich actually going down? What appears to, in the numbers, if I was looking at them, it looks like that it was a disproportionate number of students who left the district, who actually had Harwich addresses, that... So that's something that when we get the school report and where the students are at, we'll be able to make that determination. But you'll note that the Chatham, the number of students from Chatham are, at the high school level, are increasing. But the number of students from Harwich High School had a pretty significant decline.
Scott, at one point, this idea came up, but nothing formal came of it. But do we give any kind of exit interview to families who've left the district?
We have and it, we'll go engage on that, but first it's figuring out. We'll get the report that will come back, that will come back here in a couple of weeks and then do the outreach. I know last year, I believe Brian was reaching out to families and I think Bill had done a number of that to see what the reason was.
Sure.
Along the same lines as what Amy's saying, a couple of parents who the children left have said to me that, you know, they never even mentioned they were unhappy with anything. No one ever asked them. And so I wonder if there's not a way to have like a form, sort of like the, what did you like, what did you didn't like, or what was, or why did you choose to leave or something, that they need to fill out when they have their transcripts or whatever sent? Because, not that we can hold people to that, but it just would be a procedure that we might get a lot of information out of.
Like the card at the restaurant. You put it with the bill.
Yeah.
You could put the postage on.
We don't mess them that way.
Any other questions? Next on the agenda, Harwich Selectmen financing MOU.
Corporate segue.
Budgeting MOU. Do you have something to say about it? Or we're all presented with a draft last...
Oh, actually.
I guess, I know this group, this group was presented with a copy of the draft from the Selectmen. I had shared with the Finance Subcommittee my own thoughts on this and had shared, not the document, but at least verbally with, you know, with Town Administrator Clark and the Chair of the Selectmen, Chairman Hughes. My concern that the 3.25% document as written, although I don't know that it was their intent, I worry that it sort of alienates the school district and it creates sort of a continued pattern where the regional school district is over here. When we haven't gone anywhere, we're still a huge piece of Chatham's budget and a huge piece of Harwich's budget. And, you know, my want would be ideally to see some sort of document, if there was a document created that looked at things more uniform, that would create more unity, that looked at, I could see coming up with some sort of understanding that we would share revenues and we would share expenses and we would have the same percent applied townside and schoolside. And that's, you know, that's something more akin to what I was used to experiencing in my former districts where we were all in this together and town managers and superintendents presented to select boards and finance committees on the same night because it was all, you know, we were in that budget together. My hope is that this Monday becomes sort of the first step in that. You know, Town Administrator Clark and myself will be presenting the five-year projections together. Those projections, you know, it's the two pieces, you know, the two big cost centers for the town. And it's appropriate that they're presented together and that, you know, where costs go up for the town, it will impact the school budget and vice versa. And I think that it's important that we not lose sight of that unifying piece. And I am a little concerned that the way the document was initially written, you know, just sort of continued the process of having the regional school district treated as sort of separate from the town. And I argue that we really aren't any more separate from the town other than this governing board than when it was Chatham Public Schools and Harwich Public Schools.
I really liked the sentiment that you're talking about a lot. Being more specific, though, these numbers that we're talking about for 6.8, 5.2, 4.3, 4.1, those type of things, are those not the percentages that they're going to be looking for? Are those the percentages that you needed at least?
I think the sentiment in the document the Selectmen had produced was that if you look on average over the history, the recent history for the town, that throwing out a number that we just kept hearing last year, 2.5%, is really a bit of an artificial number, that there's growth beyond 2.5% and that a percentage more akin to 3.25% is more aligned to what typical increases in revenues for the town have been in recent years. I think the concern that as a school committee I can have is that the five-year projection that you've been given is still above 3.25%. And there are some fixed costs that are going to drive it above 3.25%. If health insurance is going up by 12% and it's a big piece of the budget, it's going to be hard to ever imagine us maintaining level staffing and living within the 3.25% of that document. And at the same time, I fully acknowledge that if health insurance is impacting us, health insurance is also impacting the town. It impacts the town and school a little bit differently in that we have a much larger percentage of active employees than the town. And because of that, retiree health insurance is going up at a slower pace than your family and individual active plans. So the town finance director can afford to put in a number a little less than 12%, but it's still a number significantly above 3.25%.
I think that's really true, but another thing that is different with schools is that, you know, we just talked about choice. And if students choice out, then we lose this amount of money. And if we cut, more students lose out, so we lose, I mean, it's just a drain. That doesn't happen with fire place and highway and some of that. They can't choice out two things and have a negative consequence. So, you know, apples are not, there are no apples and apples exactly.
You know, I think at least related to police and fire, I think one of the reasons why I feel that looking at some sort of unifying number and looking at this, that we're all in this together, I got a little uneasy last year in the budget conversations where I felt it was like, oh, well, if the school does this, that's going to cost us a policeman, that costs us a fireman. And I don't want to be in a position that we should not be pitying the school against public safety. It's all in town, in my case, two towns.
Sure.
I think the memo, the intention of trying to create a target in good faith is something that our Selectmen here in Harwich felt after last year, which was a very, very difficulty for not only the municipal side, but for them receiving our attempt at budget starting at 14% with or without the understanding of the school's debt added to that. It was stunning and it was something that all of us for six months attempted to try to get that handled. What does the memo do for me? Words versus deeds. A year ago at this time, we were coming in with 14% of whatever the number is. That 5.2 right now, I think, is a deed. And I think indeed it shows that we're heading in the right direction. That may not be 3.25, we may not be able to live with that, as Scott just alluded to. But I think it's the workings that Katie and Scott have done over the past 10 days and even more recently, gets us in a ballpark to say, that's what we're attempting to do. And we're all big boys and big women, we know last year's budget. Big women is not the way to say that.
You should never say that.
Well, hold it against me. But we all know what the budgeting process experience was last year. And as the Chair last year, I intended to try to see as best we could do with or without any memorandum. So, one, I don't see the need, especially now that in fact that we're starting a whole new year with these figures facing us. I think we begin in the next three months, begin to go through the meetings with the Selectmen and see what this number does as it all settles in. And I think that would be far better than each year signing a memo that is going to permit us for the next year, for the next three or four years later. And in fact, if 3.25 is too much of a shortfall, we're the ones that they apologize in saying, we're off by this amount. So I think we can gain the same amount of trust with them knowing our intention to give quality education to the kids, treat the staff in a quality way, but at the same time, be sensitive to what we can do here to finance in Harwich. So I wouldn't, right now at this stage, I wouldn't be willing to sign the memorandum.
Anyone else? The last item on our reports and discussions section, process for getting community input for the strategic plan. Open for discussion.
So I guess my question is that we have some differences of opinion on what the state law says about the school committee's responsibility with that and various different ways of looking at this. And none of that's been decided, but the strategic plan's already going forward. And that's sad to me because I understand, you know, from some of the school people here that it's already been brought to the staff. And what I had proposed earlier is that we all do this together. And that's not what's happening. And I think that's what needs to happen. So our last discussion was about the process of having a large meeting or a not-large meeting. And then there was a document that the administration had worked on and we're about to be working on our goals, which is something that probably should have come first. So there are all these pieces that aren't quite fitting together. So I don't know where the strategic plan is now. I mean, have all the school staff, all the teachers already heard that the strategic plan is the draft that came out from the administration?
I have, I put out the email to the teachers just and provided them the same copy that the committee got and then offered to meet with them at various different times. So I met on, my days are losing here. What day, it's Monday. Two days. So Monday, I met at lunchtime. I had a number of Chatham Elementary teachers come through to share with me and the question that I asked them was actually the same question I posed to you as a committee. Essentially, if you were me and, you know, from your vantage point as a teacher or as a teacher and parent, you know, many of them are parents in our system too, you know, what would be that lever that you think that had the most impact on student outcomes and learning? And, you know, they were, they shared their perspectives, you know, with me and I took notes on those after school. And I want to emphasize, it's not like everyone decided to go have lunch with the superintendent and meet with him. In fact, I think, I found that there's one way you can clear our lunchroom, show up and want to talk strategic plan, everyone heads to the library. But we had a conversation with eight different people, I think, over that lunch block. And we had a little bit, you know, maybe it was about a dozen people. Monday, after school in Sam's Building, we met with our elementary curriculum leaders. These are, sorry, our middle school and high school curriculum leaders on Tuesday?
Yesterday.
It's all blurred together. Yesterday. And Carla had this great presentation she was all set to give. And I took one out of Sam's playbook and and used the better part of an hour inviting each of them to share, you know, if they were me, what's the lever they would go and pull? And each one of them, from their vantage point again as a department, and I think many of them found something in the plan that they wanted. Others had things that they wanted to see added or emphasized differently in the plan. I've had an ongoing discussion by email and in person with Kelly Torrenzi and Mary Hemmian, who was here presenting on the math one that talks about all children, you know, should be ready for algebra. And there's some good suggestions on how that should be reworded. And at the same time, I think they each appreciated and saw that that's something I think that they feel should happen. But the word "all" and how that bullet gets articulated was important to them. So there have been ongoing conversations. I met this afternoon, I spent an hour and a half with four middle school teachers who wanted to talk about the plan. And it was a great group to talk to. You know, one of our most senior teachers in the district and a brand-new teacher who was in a charter school last year coming and providing his perspective. But it was, I found from him, it was actually a really unique perspective on somebody who's new to the district and where he feels sort of isolated in terms of getting to connect with other adults and talk about things interdisciplinary. And, you know, that was one of the bullets that we listed in the curriculum is this want in the K through seven to create this integrated interdisciplinary curriculum. And he was providing perspectives on how he feels that his small charter school facilitated that better and how we could do things to facilitate it more here. So it's been a series of conversations. I know I have high school on my calendar.
Twenty-ninth.
The 29th, I'm after school here in the library. And then on the website, we've posted the plan and also just sort of my, you know, my sort of monologue on levers and what sort of lever one wants to look at and pull. and, you know, what sort of lever one wants to look at and pull to invite, you know, to invite parents. I wanted to wait till after I meet with the staff before I go and start emailing and setting up parent forums for my end. My preference is to go and first reach out and have some, you know, spend time with the staff and then go and take it, you know, take it beyond to parents. But we want to bring parents into that same discussion. And tomorrow, I'm going to Crumpies at seven in the morning to have a similar discussion with the Harvest, the Harvest Dennis Rotary Club about, you know, things that, you know, that they, you know, they want to see in graduates. And I was there, I think, when we started this process, heading to the Rotary. And I was there briefly and just said, I want to come back and really have a conversation as, you know, business people in the community, you know, what do you want to see from the graduates? And that'll be breakfast conversation tomorrow morning, seven.
But Scott, you know, the product I don't have a problem with. But the expansion of that and maybe some details of that, I always mentioned that and some other people on your hand also. And the difficult thing is that without a consensus of the school committee, this has already begun without having representatives from the town agree on all this. And so now it's going ahead and it's divisive this way. In addition, you know, have, are any of the curriculum nights, is there any time that the strategic, the strategic plan, as it is, is being brought to parents?
I think the intent is that by having the curriculum, by having the forums for parents after the curriculum nights, that each of the principals will spend some time introducing parents to the concept and what we want, so that, so that we can use the curriculum nights as means of hopefully getting parents to want to show up to both a, you know, or either a Saturday morning forum or a weeknight forum.
So, I don't know about other people in the school committee, but I would have loved the opportunity to have participated and heard what teachers had to say or, my, I don't think I have time tomorrow. I'm not sure what time we're doing this with the Rotary, but when you said 7:00 a.m., maybe I don't have plans. But it's those kinds of things that, you know, during your Rotary when there have been at least three of us that have expressed some other thoughts. And so, I would just ask to halt everything on this. If already there's been some stuff down that's done, bridging a lack of trust, working together. And if we could just halt and get that bridge crossed and then go forward with it in a way that's going to work out well, that would be much more productive, I think.
Terry. Since the leadership team and Scott back in July spent a week launching this, whether or not they signify to all of us, whether or not we misread it, whether or not, this is my opinion, whether or not there are three or four or six different ways or a dozen ways to approach a strategic plan, many of us have probably experienced it over our careers for years. That being said, my belief is and my trust is that the superintendent and the administrative team and the staff, they create and design the strategic plan. The school committee approves it. I think that process is simple and it's clear. And even though we may be the final approval with the vote, we have all the opportunity to give input along the way. As a matter of fact, about five hours of it in late July and August in the workshop. And we're now still, I think, frustrated about discussing the process, how this all started. I guess to bring some clarity to it, I'd like to make a motion. I actually have two motions. One would be that the school committee adopts and supports the strategic planning draft of the superintendent designed by the administrative team in July as a framework to launch our next steps towards a 217 strategic plan.
I'll second that. As a draft.
It's a draft, it's the draft.
And those documents you shared with the, they still have the draft on there?
Very much so. And, you know, I think it's, I think it's important to note, I mean, even me, I'll fully own the reverse engineering math to get all students to algebra. You know, I mean, after we have conversations with Mary and Kelly and yesterday we heard from Darlene Coy at the middle school, I think that bullet, I think each of them would support that, the concept of that bullet. And it needs to be reworked, and I think in adopting what their, you know, their ideas and feel and history of our towns are. And it's, and I think it's not just me sitting in the rooms. Each time, Robin was with me at Chatham Elementary and Sam at Harwich Elementary. Ultimately, the feedback, you know, all of the different feedback. And we'll go and put out a survey to parents and use Survey Monkey and get, you know, get feedback. All of that ultimately gets assimilated back in. And I'll work the same way I worked with the admin team to take, you know, take those voices and put the, that, go from that draft to something that we're bringing back to the committee. The other thing that I've emphasized when talking with people is it's really a two-step place for feedback and for incorporating voices into it. Because at the end of the day, you know, we come back and ideally in the Thanksgiving timeframe, hopefully have a document that's accepted as this is what that one-page or strategic plan looks like. The next phase involves, you know, creating, you know, four or five or however many mini-subcommittees to go create work plans. And that's been part of the conversation. And I think, you know, there was a number of staff that were kind of excited. I liked, you know, that's, you know, there was the Harwich Elementary School Guidance Counselor who was, you know, very excited and wants to be very involved in the student support, you know, conversations. And, you know, working with the experts in curriculum or student supports or, you know, people who are very interested in culture to make sure we come up with work plans that, you know, that will make each of those initiatives come to fruition. It's an important thing. But, you know, so there are, you know, there's sort of a two-step piece. There's one, bringing it back to this group for approval and then moving forward to develop those work plans, which is another area for complete and connection.
I have a motion on the table. Do I have a second for that motion?
You have a second.
You have a second.
So, we're discussing.
Discussing. Okay.
Okay. I've been waiting to talk for some time. When we spoke about the strategic plan, when we last discussed it, we talked about different ways of getting to the finished product. And we, as Sharon mentioned, we didn't have consensus on how to get there. We had a document that was put before us with some information from DESE. And some of it was taken directly from a website, some of it wasn't. And there was a conclusion at the end that said, superintendents develop strategic plans. That, to me, was a subjective conclusion because I looked at information from the Mass General Laws, the DESE website. And I looked at mass information about roles and responsibilities. And it says that the school committee approves, but it also indicates that the school committee participates or can participate in the process, that it is not delegated to the superintendent necessarily. It can be, but it is not delegated. I'm happy to pass out the information if you all want to look at it.
Still a discussion, discussion stage.
I'm still, yeah.
Still.
I'm still discussing. I just wanted to pass this out so you could look at what I looked at. And I apologize, some of it's really dark because I had to actually print and highlight and copy. So, I'm sorry, it's not clear. When we, I guess there were a couple of points that I wanted to talk to. One was that Sharon had said, you know, we're working as a school committee on our goals. It's my understanding that our goals should actually be informing the strategic plan and driving the strategic plan. And with the diagrams that are on the DESE website and so forth, it kind of shows that we start with a district plan and other things feed into it. And is that not what we're working on in the workshop? And that, at the moment, that's a rhetorical question. But however we decide to move forward with the strategic plan and the process, at the very least, I thought that we agreed that the school committee would participate. I thought we agreed that we all wanted to participate. When it was brought up that we could have a subcommittee, Terry said, well, why don't we all be on the committee? Okay, well, if we're all on a committee, are we not participating? It doesn't seem like we are. And if we're not participating, maybe we don't agree that we want to participate in this process, then we should have, at the very least, be informed about what's going on. The website didn't have all this information. It had very little of this information about the plan. There was nothing that said that there was going to be a presentation or was a presentation to the Harwich Elementary School, that it was going to be presented to the Chatham Elementary School, I'm not sure, during curriculum night. Wasn't anything that said there was going to be a meeting with the Chatham Elementary School teachers that happened on Monday, the middle school teachers today. That wasn't there. I mean, at the very least, I think we should be informed of what's going on in this process and should be able to have some input.
I follow up on that.
Yes, please.
I agree that we should have input and I agree that we should have information. We should have input at each stage and we should have information at each stage. I'm not sure exactly what the right process to accomplish that is. Certainly, if there are going to be public forums scheduled, we should be notified in advance so that we can attend and hear for ourselves what people are going to say. It occurs to me, you know, my experience as a husband of a teacher, I think that there's going to be a lot of circumstances where to get input from the teachers is going to have to be during school hours. It's going to be a lot to ask teachers to attend a public forum after work. I would appreciate the types of reports that we're getting tonight in terms of the feedback from the teachers and staff and people like that. So, I think if we can reach a, if we can reach a consensus that when there's a, and also, none of us is realistically going to be able to attend all of the meetings with all the groups of teachers and all the lunches and all the after-school things because most of us work for a living. So, I think if we can find a way, as I say, we can agree that whenever there's going to be a public forum, that we could realistically attend with enough notice so we could make the decision or have the opportunity to attend. I would respectfully ask that we, given that opportunity, and then for anything in which, you know, if Scott meets with some teachers at the elementary school and they support the things that are in there, just saying that they support a lot of things that are in there is probably enough to report without telling us exactly which ones. But I would like to hear the new things that they have to offer. So, I think if we had a procedure, when Terry referred to us all being on the strategic committee, my interpretation of that would be, was, and I understood it to be, that there would be an agenda item every meeting in which we would get a report on any meetings that he's had with people that we would probably not have been able to attend. I don't want to be here all night, so I don't want to hear, they love this part of it because it's already in there. But I would like to hear things that they want to add so that we can say, hey, I think we should add that too. Or I don't think we should add that this year, maybe next year. So, that's the way I think we should be able to do this in such a way that's realistic in terms of our time and resources.
Karen.
May I say I agree with Brian? I would just like to be, I think we should all be informed before there are these meetings, whether it's a public forum or not a public forum. Can we just be informed about them? That would be really helpful. And yes, I would, I would agree with Brian that I would like to know the things that they have to add. You know, if they agree with it, great, substantially agree with it, great, that's wonderful. But, you know, let's hear the new ideas that are coming forward from anyone. I'd like to hear all of them. And hopefully we'll, I mean, not hopefully, but I would like to request as well that we have an item to be informed of what's going on at every meeting.
Sure.
I'd like to make amendment to what Terry said. And that is that we're informed at least two weeks in advance of these things. And so, if we would be able to get there, we'd be welcome to come and participate with that.
Just for the discussion here, to your point, Sharon.
No, she has a motion.
I just would, wait, oh, I'm sorry.
She amended a motion. We need to either, necessarily, we either need to...
She's speaking so softly, I can't hear her, so. She has to, someone has to second her.
I just want to amend what Terry said to include that we'd be notified two weeks in advance, at least, when these are going to be held. And that way, we wouldn't be invited to come and participate in, you know, these type of things.
I would say that to be a second motion. If I could clarify without knowing Robert's rules, I do have a second motion here that reflects a couple of weeks ago about us being a permanent committee and having input that I think what Sharon said would add into my second motion, it'd simplify. This motion that I raised only had to do with the draft framework developed by the superintendent and the leadership team. So, I'm asking for that motion to be with discussion.
Repeat it again.
Without, I move that the school committee...
I think we still have to deal with the amendment.
We need to deal with her.
The point of...
I have a second.
It's been dealt with.
So, if it's not second, it's not even a second.
I'm asking that we, the amendment goes to that, that we are notified two weeks in advance and that we'll be able to come and participate with that.
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
Do I have a second for that?
I'll second that.
Now we want to, did I get a second?
No.
Okay, the discussion, I think your, two weeks is too much because in this timeframe, it sounds like they're going to be shorter time frames in two weeks.
While we're discussing the motion, which is now the second, I'm not going to support, I'm not going to support that motion yet, okay? I want to hear the second half of his motion first. If it's, what he has, obviously what he has in mind is to propose a method for doing this. So, if his method isn't good, then I might then reconsider my position on your one.
But the thing is, I don't want to bother on his before we hear the second one.
She made an amendment, it was seconded, is a discussion on the second.
How much is, how difficult is that, the two weeks?
Well, it would involve me not having, so we have, we have posted on the website our things that October 3rd and October 6th, which October 3rd would be...
A Saturday.
Would not be in the two-week time horizon.
Why does that?
I can tell you it's less than a week.
What do you think is a reasonable time period in keeping the process going?
Well, I, you know, I'm happy to inform people of, you know, anytime we're going to be meeting and have it crank that out. And, you know, we try to be very transparent in terms of days and places.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Fine. I don't want to, I like the idea of notice because I think everybody should have an opportunity whenever possible to attend. I'm concerned about the two-week thing because I'm concerned that that would then prevent things from happening.
Well, an example, an example thereof, I got an email last week from... from a member of the Harwich Dennis Rotary asking me to come back and, you know, offering me, you know, like, two days from the day that I emailed, or tomorrow. And I went with tomorrow because I wanted to wait till after tonight. But, you know, sometimes, you know, and I, I, I guess in my, my ideal world, I'd love to reach out to, you know, a whole bunch of different community groups and say, "I'd like to get in and talk with you and, you know, bring some of my, you know, some of my administrators with me and, and have a conversation about what, you know, what the community wants." And, you know, it's like, I can inform people on when they're going to be, but sometimes you're like, "Okay, you're on the next agenda."
Well, the difficult thing is, you're making it at a time that would be convenient for you and your administrators, but why not make it at a time that would be convenient for all of us? Because, I mean, they, I'm not saying that the one that's tomorrow should be changed. I'm not saying that. They're expecting you tomorrow, that's their agenda. But, but then, I mean, since it's a community thing, we're the community reps, it would be great for us to be there if we can spare the time. I mean, the time is difficult. So, maybe, maybe we don't do two weeks, but maybe we could do 10 days. It's really hard if we don't have dates ahead to plan that.
I, I, I agree. I think it's, it's challenging to get, to come up with a date that all this group can get together for, for a lot of things. And, and to be perfectly honest, it's, it's challenging. You know, the meeting I'm going to tomorrow morning, I'm going to leave, you know, Commander Russell in charge of, you know, anything constructionally. Because frequently, me saying yes to something means I'm bumping something else in the calendar. It, it's, it's, I, I'm, I'm not making things, at, at times, they're convenient for me. Sometimes it's just saying...
But what you're saying is there's no value, that you don't have value in us enough to make it ahead.
I don't hear, I don't hear that.
Well, make it some kind of value so we can try to be there. Like, I'm not asking for you to even plan it around us, but just inform us at the time so we stand a chance to be there.
Any other items? All right, we have a vote on the proposed amendment to require a two-week notice on all meetings. All those in favor? Opposed?
Opposed, aye.
And abstentions? Does not carry. Go back to the prior motion to accept the current draft of the strategic plan as that, the draft, to move forward. Any more discussion?
Yes. I would like to be open to, um, during these meetings, to other thoughts they might have, not just, like, if you're already with a group of people, to just say, "How do you like the reading program or the things we've thought about?" If there's anything else that they think of while we're there, it would be good to hear it. And I'm not necessarily saying it would even be on it, but we might decide that's great.
Just, just to emphasize. This is on his motion.
Yeah, well, I, well, I'm...
And that's to say that it, we're accepting that draft as the starting point. There's nothing in there saying we're not going to change it. There's nothing in there saying we're not going to listen to people because that's, that's, that's the whole point. It is a draft.
Okay, then we will, and that's all.
Any more questions or discussion? All those in favor of Terry's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? To abstentions? Mr. Russell?
I have a second motion. I would move that we charge the superintendent and his administrative staff to all meetings with the staff at all levels, variety of parent meetings in the community at large to review and get specific input into the strategic plan. And that he will to make, he will make monthly presentations as an agenda item to the school committee.
Second.
Okay, wait.
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
A second.
I just would like to recognize what Brian said is very valuable in terms of offering times for Scott to meet with the teachers that aren't just after school, but are also convenient and realistic that you're going to have a good forum of teachers there. The, the other piece is...
You do realize that based on their contract, we can't do that.
Well, you can't do, well, she's supporting what he's already doing.
Yeah. Yeah. Then the, the other piece is, um, I would like to get some kind of report sooner than a month because I just think it's valuable information that I would like to consider, that informs our goals as we're working on our goals. And I think a month is way too long a period to wait till the, even the next school committee meeting. I would like to get just a quick little report. These were some things that I found interesting, that the teachers brought up, or whatever, just some bullets that would help inform those goals.
Asking for amended motion, he's dying to amend his motion.
Amend away.
I, I would be open to amend it to, uh, to relate to every school committee meeting and regular updates by the superintendent, A and B, if it's... Each and every school committee meeting would have an agenda item regarding progress and input on the strategic plan. And then have regular update memos or reports generated by the superintendent as appropriate.
Second on that?
Well, this is your second, over his amendment.
I'll second his amendment.
So, my discussion would be, um, two things.
One is about what Amy's saying, that I think that, um, prior to our next goals meeting, by at least a couple of days, to get something about what, you know, all the teacher... You, I assume, or somebody took notes on what all the teachers said. And so, we can get those kinds of things before that meeting. And then, you know, it probably would take very little time for somebody to send that out after each meeting. But the other thing back again is to, to get notice so we can actually attend these meetings. And I would like to make that, um, uh, seven days in advance. That's the fact, that, that we no chance otherwise.
Yes.
Are you amending the amendment?
I, I will.
We're the discussion.
We're discussing the amendment, right?
Before we start amending the amendments...
That's fine.
Where's my... No, I, I, I'm, I take that back because I'm confused.
Right. I'm going to just, I'm going to refer back to the person who's made the motion and see whether they'll add to his motion. The suggestion that in addition to the things you've already provided for, that in regard to pre-scheduled public forums, that we be notified as soon as possible and whenever possible, no later than seven days, no shorter than seven days.
I, I would agree with that.
Well, that's his motion now, not mine.
Did you get that?
Absolutely. We don't have a second.
Yes, we need a second.
I'll second.
So, we have a question. Does that provide for, um... Sorry, if that works, I'm sad.
It'll come back.
Yeah, it will, um...
I'm no longer a big boy, so... A big man.
Not going to touch that.
So, the motion is that he's charging Scott and the administrators to meet with staff, parents, the public, and to accept input...
Provide reports.
Right. And that, um, Scott will be making reports to the school committee, every school committee meeting, on what has happened since the last meeting. And he will notify all school committee members of every public meeting that is to be held for the strategic plan. And when appropriate, it will be no less than seven days. If there are meetings that are scheduled with less than seven days notice, you will still be noticing us.
So, I could just ask on clarification on that. Why something would need to be held before seven days?
Well, like...
Case in point, he was invited to the Rotary short notice. It's a public meeting that he's going to notice.
Let me make it out a week from now or something, and that's a good way to do that.
He could get, um, asked by the selectmen to come to their next meeting and make a reason date.
Same thing.
That's less than seven days.
Right, I'll make it the next week. I mean, that's quite a lot of things to do, it's easy to do that.
I can't always do that.
Right, I, I think to a certain point, we have to respect and defer to his best intentions. I don't think that he's going to purposely schedule a meeting for tomorrow in order to exclude us from the meeting. But if the, if, if a group of public people say, "We, we would like to meet with you tomorrow, we have our own agenda and we can fit you in tomorrow," and he's agreeing to give us a report from what's said, I, I think at some point we should defer to him in terms of his best intentions.
Except for all the stuff that's already happened without any...
Oh, we're moving...
We can say we're moving through every day, but it doesn't...
Then are you making a motion?
Tomorrow's another day, is that a better expression?
No more motion.
No, no more, no more.
Okay. More discussion on a new thing, not something that we've hatched over five or six times already.
Sorry, for a second.
Karen?
I was just going to say that, um, to Sharon's point, with this motion, we can move forward and have covered, um, prevent this from happening, that things are going on that we are not informed. That's how I feel. This is a good move forward motion.
Okay. The motion, as I just described, from Mr. Russell?
Hearing no more.
No longer, Terry? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So moved. Next on the agenda is the subcommittee reports, first item is student activity account update. Did you, did the policy subcommittee be to...
Yes, we met and we had a bright discussion. We learned a lot of things from Katie about, um, and Scott, about the student activities, all the little intricacies of how there are all kinds of exceptions to things and little problems. And we didn't finish completely, so we'll be finishing at our next meeting.
Do we have a timeframe where we think we may finish?
Within seven days, I would hope.
Karen?
Just to add to that, um, we, we did go over that, as Sharon said, and we spoke to Katie and we did give her some direction, which is what she said she was looking for, that we're going to substantially, for the most part, adopt the, um, the guidelines that's given to us with a couple of small changes. So, I think it's, it's, we're almost there, we just need to meet again. And, you know, we will be posting the agenda and so forth as far as when we're going to meet again, hopefully soon, to get this taken care of.
Very good. Do we have any other subcommittee reports? Hearing none, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Uh, just, I'll, um, be really, I think we've covered everything else. Just, um, the, in the last 24 hours, the state has released MCAS scores for various districts, um, in, in terms of monoloy. Only our 10th graders took, you know, took the MCAS tests or, or other students were taking the PARC exam.
It's a case of...
It happens every time I start talking.
Just a, make it some good journal about in the dark.
So, um, the, you know, so we only have MCAS data for the 10th graders in English, math, and science. And then we have MCAS data in science, and I believe it's for 8th grade and 5th grade. All other, all other tests were PARC tests. The punchline is that our, we saw a slight increase in the number of students who finished in the advanced and proficient in the 10th grade English. We saw a, a slight decrease in the number of students that finished in the advanced and proficient mathematics. And again, math is one of those areas, as we're looking at the strategic plan that we really need to bolster. You know, we, you know, we're, I, I think we're making headway and forward movement when it comes to ELA. We have, you know, we have a lot of ground to make up when it comes to math. The numbers, the numbers are a little bit, um, um, hard to interpret when it comes to science. We saw a decrease in the number of students that were finishing in the advanced and proficient range in science. It's, it's a slight decrease and that could be a bit of a factor of us bringing two curriculum together. So, our 10th graders, our 10th graders that came from, from Chatham would have been enarking upon a two-year biology experience where it would be sort of a macro-microbiology in Chatham, as, as historically done quite well on the science MCAS. The Harwich students were coming in with a year of physical science and then essentially half of a year of biology. It would be a year-long course, but only covering, you know, sort of half of the main content areas. And so, you know, so I suspect that when we look at the science scores a year from now, where we see our students in 10th grade being exposed to that macro-micro, you know, two years of biology, and I think we'll see the, the science scores rocket back up. So, we don't have any data from, you know, what PARC about how our students fare versus other students yet.
Toby?
We do have several action items for the statement. We have, um, declaration of surplus materials. We didn't get pictures with this stuff.
There were so many pictures, I didn't want to, I thought there was so much space that was going to be used, so I brought colored pictures for all of them. I was trying to save, I thought that the emails would be too large to send. So, there are colored photos in front of you.
Is it imperative that we do these tonight? Is there stuff that's...
Steve would say yes. But that's okay, we can save it for next time.
I, I think, I, I think the, I, I think particularly for Steve, the second page that deals with the surplusing cabinets from the culinary renovation, which currently are a large pile behind me, little school, would be moved, us to have those items removed before something, mischief has happened to them.
And then we donate to resolve, I think it's called, or restore?
Restore.
The rest is our stuff.
Let's move on. We're pending it for...
I just wanted to say, um, thank you to, this was Steve that put in here an estimated value, donate to restore, that's great, that's very helpful. Last time there was a disposal of surplus materials, I was wondering where they went. It's nice to know that, especially that it's going to restore, yeah. So, it's great. Thanks, Steve.
And, and there's some, lots of broken file cabinets and broken desks that we'll be looking to have somebody come to, we're hoping to get a little bit of money for the metal. And the books are going to get donated to, um...
Nancy?
I'm going in. I move to declare surplus from Chatham Elementary School, two overhead projectors on par, two one homemade wooden shelf no longer wanted by new staff, two homemade wooden tables no longer wanted, two two-by-two-by-two wooden storage cart no longer wanted, two stack desk chairs, four cafeterias... staff desk chairs, four cafeteria chairs, approximately 10 various-sized wooden shelves removed from classrooms, one shelving unit, one two-by-two-by-two cart on wheels, one cook rack, one three-foot tall metal shelf rack on wheels, one folding chair, one metal basket.
Eight.
Oh, sorry, I was thinking it had eight metal baskets, excuse me, wire is solid. We'll do that separately with, that's the elementary school surplus. I was going to say, a purchase of...
It's late, but it's still...
But what's that? Do we do the whole thing together, or do we have separate?
Right through them, and then through it as one thing.
And then from Montomoy Middle School, one table, two computer tables, one cubby, three drawing tables, one Leavy Susan-style book rack, approximately 15 sections of cabinets from the Culinary Arts for the Nation into a science room, some quantity, 117 or just 17? 117 outdated science textbooks, workbooks miscellaneous, one speaker set, one storage cabinet with a door, one two-door file cabinet, one metal storage cabinet, one paint storage cabinet, one trash can used for dust collector in the wood tech department, one desk extension endpiece, four staff desk chairs, three student chairs, one music stand, two, excuse me, one two-file drawer, one server rack from old TV studio, 16 table bases with cabinets from wooden tech that are no longer needed, four TV cards, one portable toilet, one camera, three gas stoves, one bookcase from home, one stove pot from Culinary Arts, five sinks from Culinary Arts, one well-o oven insert from Culinary Arts, and one piano. And a partridge in the pear tree.
That's a second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Only because I have the partridge in the pear tree.
Want to make note that even though we're declaring this surplus equipment, it is not necessarily being thrown away, there are items here that will be donated to a new home. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
I have one very quick question. It used to be, a couple of years ago, that we didn't do any of this, and then I thought these were just being done for, because we're regionalizing, but anytime something's gotten rid of, it's going to happen for all the future, is that right?
No, actually, it's our responsibility to declare, because we're a regional district, it's our responsibility to declare the equipment as surplus.
All right, well, that's great, thanks.
Approval of a payment prior year stipend?
Is that what the, the Chatham Elementary Talent Show Club leader is, which I believe Sharon Armstrong served as the talent show club leader, and did not receive a stipend for the time and effort she put into that, and this is us coming back to rectify that.
So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So moved. And the last item, we cannot do because it is not completed as of yet. At what time is that, or no?
A, a literally three minutes.
I will time you.
I will, yeah.
You want to sign?
Accept the motion to go into executive session, for which we will not return to general meetings.
I will begrudgingly say...
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Aye.
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 Aye.